All right. Good evening, everyone. It is the 18th of February 2021, and you are joining the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission for a work session, one of two work sessions this month. We have three items on the agenda tonight. We're going to hear from Beth Higgins and members of the Overview Commission who met last year. We are going to hear from Josh Carroll from Malden and Jenkins, who is our external auditor looking at financial management. And we're going to hear from Captain Harrison Daniel regarding Athens Clark County Police use of force. So I welcome everybody. Andrew Williams, anything else you'd like to say by means of welcome?
No, sir. Thank you, Mayor. You covered it.
Okay. Beth, thank you so much for being here and thank you for all the members of the Overview Commission for being stalwarts through a very challenging year and hanging on to the end. We really appreciate it. I'm going to turn it over to you. Beth, do you need to be able to screen share? Oh, you're muted.
There we go. So I said, thank you very much for having me tonight and let me go first. I, for some reason, I thought I was going to follow a report, but I'm very happy to go first and follow the agenda. I do need to share my screen, so I'll go ahead and share a PowerPoint if that's all right.
Absolutely, and you should be able to present.
All right, here we go. Let's see how we can do here. How's that? Is that looking good? Do you have a report there?
It's not coming through.
No, let's try here. Let's try again here.
There it is.
All right, very good, very good. I think this is going to be my last bit of technology for some time to come. We were forced to all do it. We were forced to be able to use all this technology this year. And being on the older side of the technology chasm, it's not been too much of a challenge, but a little bit. But I thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight to review the 2020 Overview Commission Report. I do hope that everybody got a copy of it last week, that you've got a chance to take a look at it. And if you at least had a cursory view of it, that you're able to maybe have whatever questions available once I finish going through the review. The Overview Commission was 21 citizens selected from all the commission districts and appointed by the grand jury last, actually, the year before last in 2019. They're charged with conducting an overview of the ACC government. They are appointed every 10 years to provide a report to the mayor and the commission after a one-year review of the operations of the government. This was the 2020 Overview Commission for this year. These are the members who volunteered and were selected by the grand jury in 2019. So on this list, we have seven members from District 1. We have two members each from Districts 4, 6, 8, and 10. We have one from Districts 2, 3, and 7. And we had no representation from District 9 on the commission. So one of the requirements in the charter is relatively equal representation on the commission. And you see right away from those numbers that they had a little bit of a difficulty being able to fulfill that, that we were a little bit lopsided, mostly to District 1. And then we had some districts that weren't as well represented. And that problem was kind of exacerbated as we continued on in the year. I wanted to let you know a little bit about the work and what we did and what we went through during this year. As you mentioned, it was not an easy year for anyone. And the commission was not excluded from the difficulties and problems of trying to do our work during 2020. But we already had some difficulties with the commission early on. We had some difficulties with organization structure and defining our mission and goals. So we struggled quite a bit when you have 21 people, a very diverse group of people with very different backgrounds. It was a little bit difficult to establish a baseline without an established framework. So we basically started from the language in the charter, which offers some guidance on what to do, not a whole lot of guidance on how to do it. And we suffered originally with a couple of early resignations. And these were members who did not really understand what they had signed up to do. And they felt that that was not something that they were willing to continue on in the year. So right away in the initial parts of the commission, we suffered two resignations. And that worried us because, again, we were concerned about the balance, proper representation, the validity of our analysis from all the districts. So this was a concern for all of us. But we continued on. We had several departmental briefings from the government. And we very much appreciated those that were up to the time till March, that were able to contribute their time to educate those on the commission on how the government was organized and what our role would be in trying to help the government be better. We established committees basically aligned with the way the last commission had aligned their committees and how they had divided up the work and being able to review the government. So we basically, you know, copied the 2010 commission on how they decided to organize their committees. But as everyone knows, in March, we were struck with the pandemic. And that was a real blow to our operation. We basically had just gotten going. And but all our meetings and committee work came to a complete halt, as it did for most any organizational work that was not considered emergency work or wasn't considered something that was immediately required to do during the pandemic. Many of the members who were full-time workers found their workload doubled or tripled in some cases. Many of those that served in the medical community, of course, those that worked in the IT departments had a significant amount of work that they did not. So they were no longer able to be able to commit to the work of the OC. We had many members who were at-risk areas, who did not see how they could continue to contribute because they knew they would not be able to attend meetings. And we actually had two members that relocated out of county by their work. So they were no longer eligible to serve on the commission. So we lost two more members during that period and several, as I say, members who had asked to resign, who were encouraged to continue as much as they could based on the fact that we didn't know what was going to happen or what we were going to be able to do. So in June, most organizations were able to figure out how to reach out in the virtual environment, the environment that we're in now. And we realized that we would be allowed to do that. So originally, all these meetings had to be in person, required to be in person. So the extension of the virtual capability to our work was supported by the IT department, and we really appreciated their ability to do that. But we still struggled being able to find a consensus on the way forward and what we're going to do. And we had many members who thought we should just close shop because it was not going to be valid, our ability to do the work with the members that we had lost and under the conditions. And then the 8th of August, the majority of the members voted to complete only two approved focus areas to finalize your report and adjourn the commission. So the work that you see in the report that you have are basically the work that was done by members up until the 8th of August, when they made that vote, that they weren't going to continue to do any more in-depth work. And what you see on the left side of your screen is basically the status of the membership, those members that stuck it out to the end, that were able to. And I really appreciate it, and those that were not able to continue for many different reasons that had to resign from the commission. So you get a chance to see how that worked and what happened there. So my computer decides it doesn't want to cooperate. There we go. Okay, so what you have in the report, what you have in your written binder, this is basically the outline of the report. So we have a summary of the findings that we have, the specific outlines of the mission of the Overview Commission, the administrative processes that we went through, and then our areas of finding and recommendations is basically what should be the heart of the report. As I mentioned, when we reorganized in June, we abandoned the committee structure, mostly because we had many committees that were no longer manned. And we reorganized to establish focus areas. And there were many members that took more than one area to start working on. The two focus areas that were adopted prior to that vote in August was the focus area on the Overview Commission itself and changes to improve the operation of the Overview Commission. And the second area, which was the evaluation of the government response to the 2010 Overview Commission. That original evaluation was primarily intended to be a baseline for all the other areas of work. But since that was one of the few areas that was actually completed prior to that vote, then that became a focus area. Focus area four, auditing and operational analysis office, the members of that focus area were very intent on being able to communicate their findings and their recommendations on that area. So they did a standalone briefing to the Audit Committee in October to communicate their findings, even though that was not something that was a formal, approved area from all the members of the Overview Commission. And then in detail, you'll see Focus Area 1 report and Focus Area 2 report. So Focus Area 1 was the specific area on the Overview Commission itself, its appointment and operations. Basically, three areas to be able to assist in determining whether, first of all, is the Overview Commission an accountability structure that the mayor commission thinks is still valid and still a requirement and still something valuable every 10 years to review the operations of the government? So originally, the Overview Commission was, the design of the Overview Commission was to review the implementation of the unification of the county and the city of Athens. And the Overview Commission was to review, was the unification actually going according to plan? So the first one was four years after the unification. The second one was four years following after that. In 2010, they felt that, or sorry, in 2000, after the 2000 Overview Commission, they felt that 10 years would be a good period to be able to continue doing the Overview Commission. So 2000, 2010, and then 2020 was the next one, our commission. So we felt that many of the aspects of the Overview Commission itself is something that the mayor commission should look at. First of all, to decide whether they feel that the Overview Commission is something of value, knowing that the amount of time and energy and effort that it takes to be able to make these things work, that it actually provides the kind of overview and the kind of information that's useful to the mayor and commission. And whether, very specifically, see on the left, a lot of these specific aspects of the commission needs adjustment in order to make it more effective. The timing of the appointment, and this is the appointment for the members. So we had great difficulty in the beginning because the grand jury was not able to recruit enough members from each one of the districts. And they were not, I think they had difficulty recruiting any members. And I don't know how well it was advertised because to me, it seems like a great opportunity for many citizens who would like to do this kind of work, would love to be able to serve on this type of commission. But the members that were appointed were actually given their appointment orders the same day that they were required to be in the first meeting by the language of the charter, which proved quite difficult to be able to self-organize in basically a matter of hours. And so the timing of the appointment, we felt, is something that should be looked at. The number of members and the members from each district, the replacement of members, as you can well imagine, after the number of resignations that we had, that being able to replace members, especially if we lose members early in the operation, is something that is a mechanism that we think is kind of important. And then very specific things, convening dates, convening periods, and the goals and objectives to being able to be clear and to be able to provide a better platform for establishing basically an organization that has to operate in and out of a year. Most people that have served on boards know how difficult it is to organize the boards and to get the amount of work that they need to get done once they're actually even completely organized. And this organization has to start day one, square one, without a lot of, without a lot of structure, not a good framework to be able to start. So we did feel like the relationship with the board, the relationship with the commission, to the manager, to the attorney, to the auditor, and the Office of Public Information, those two, those four areas that really need to supply support to the Overview Commission for it to be effective and for them to understand the relationships of each so that the commission can maintain its independence, but at the same time, get the required support that they need, we thought was useful to take a look at. And finally, action by the ACC government, we felt, and I'd start off with here, this kind of orientation packet, this kind of baseline to get started. And we did take care of a lot of things very quickly. And we really did appreciate all the support that we got from the government. But it was kind of piecemeal, and it was kind of after the fact in the sense that trying to figure out how we were going to have our administrative support without having any direct relationship with anyone in the government that's established or without having a baseline contract for external support made it very difficult. So again, the government was very willing to help us to do that. However, the amount of time that it took for us to do it ourselves and the amount of money that it was going to cost for the kind of contract that we needed, we thought was much too much money for what we needed. So that moves me back up to funding. So to have in the budget ahead of time, so we know when we get started, what funds are available, and to have a contract already established would be really useful. And then finally, the guidance to the grand jury is something to be able to recruit the kind of talent and the kind of information, the kind of support that you need. I think it would be good for the grand jury to have some information about what they should be looking at in the folks that they're trying to recruit to serve on these commissions and then how to recruit. So in particular, the fact that we didn't have members across from all the districts that maybe the commissioners themselves could say, these are, to encourage folks in their own districts to be able to serve on the commission, to help on the areas that they find very important. And then the whole concept of working under the Office of Operational Analysis. So previous commissions always operated under the, the Office of Operational Analysis was their sponsoring department. Like most all boards that I'm aware of in the government, they have a staff member or someone that is their contact. And the Office of Operational Analysis did that in the past. But this time, it took us probably three months till we figured out that that's what we wanted to do and how we wanted to do it. And if that was something that was already established, that might be more helpful. So this whole focus area basically was on ourselves and the Overview Commission, how to make it better so that as a mechanism, an accountability mechanism, if we want it, if we want to keep it, and it's something useful and good for the government, to make it so that it actually can work. I don't know why my computer doesn't want out. Okay, so I do think we're joined with one of the members here who worked very hard on the review of the 2010 Overview Commission. Ellen, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, hi, Ellen. Thank you so much. And I did want to have a couple other members, and there were a couple others that did want to join us on the briefing today, who had spent many, many hours and lots of work on the report. And I wanted a couple of them send their regrets today because they really wanted to be able to contribute to the briefing and be able to provide information to all. Ellen Walker, she, I must say, did a yeoman's job on this report of all the folks that worked on the commission. If we give a prize there, Mayor, it's Ellen. She's done a fabulous job. And I asked her tonight to talk about this particular one because she worked. And you will see that the bulk of the report is this. And Ellen, I'll pass it to you. And I want to personally thank you for the work that you've done.
Well, thank you. I really enjoyed working on the Overview Commission. But I do think that a lot of the challenges beyond the COVID-19 situation really made it frustrating for most of us who wanted to see it through all the way to the end. I wanted to just mention that one of the reasons why we did ultimately vote to just focus on these two areas, and I'm thrilled that the, several of the commission members were able to give a presentation to the Audit Committee because I think that was really important, even though it wasn't one of the final focus areas that we had agreed would be in the formal final report. But one of the issues was that in past commissions, it was very clear that most of the people on the commission were able to go to these departments and meet with the department heads and talk with the people who work there. And without being able to do that, we really had no way to finish the work to the level that we wanted to. So one of the things we thought we could do, and it may not seem that important now or that relevant, but we look back at all the massive list of recommendations that the 2010 Overview Commission provided. We felt that it was way above and beyond. It was amazing what they were able to accomplish. It made us feel very insecure that we were never going to be able to reach that level of just reporting back to you. But we thought what might be a worthwhile venture was to review the entire list of recommendations, get in touch with all the department heads with the extreme help of the manager and I think the mayor and several other people. I'm sure the auditor reached out to departments saying, okay, this was your list in 2010. These were the recommendations from the Overview Commission. What did you accomplish? And we thought that that at least would help to guide you, to guide future commissions as to what you really cared about, what you really wanted to see come out of a report. And I do know that early on, we all realized that there was no way we were going to do the 180 recommendations. But we thought it would be helpful to remind departments that they had had a list that had come out of the Overview Commission in 2010 and where did those items stand on their agendas now or their long-term planning or their strategic plan? So you get an extremely detailed report in front of you or you've got it in print recently. And so we just crunched the numbers, got all the information, figured out what didn't, didn't, did and did not get responded to and some reasons why. And we just thought that that would be an important thing to help you for future commissions to guide their work so that they're not spread quite so thin, not looking into things that really aren't going to be as helpful. Because our view is really that the Overview Commission should only be looking at things that the government wants us to look at. Not that we shouldn't look at some other areas that, but I think that we came in just completely blind, not knowing anything. And so looking back at, which we had never seen done before, we had never seen the previous commissions have a final review like this. So it was just thought that this might be a useful tool to look at, and it's laid out department by department, question by question, plan by plan, and you can look and see so that in the future, you can say, we really don't need the Overview Commission to look at X, Y, and Z. That really wasn't part of their charter, their, what they were supposed to be doing. So it is quite a, quite a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Is that good, Beth?
That's excellent. Thank you so much, Ellen. Appreciate it. Are there any specific questions for those two focus area reports before I continue?
Anything from commissioners? All right, Beth.
All right. So the final, and many of the commissioners have seen this already, and we included with the notes, the briefing, the special briefing to the Audit Committee. And this is just an attachment because it's not a formal part of the report. These were the last two slides on the briefing on recommendations and practical steps. So as you can read in the overview and the introduction to the report, that we felt in general that we have a very strong government. We have very good government. We have very engaged citizens. We have very hard-working elected officials. We have very strong management that really works on achieving best practices. So these are things that we've seen in the areas that we did get to look at and are impressions. But we did think that there was a weakness in the area of accountability structures. This one is one of them. So the ability to use the Overview Commission in the way, in the most effective way so that it can really kick out things that are valuable and useful to the government. It needs to have a good framework, a good baseline before it gets started and a good, a good way of, as you all know, that when you join these new groups, that it takes a process to be able to get them to understand how to achieve consensus and how to go forward on not just what they're going to do, but how they're going to do it. And that's very hard with a government like ours, which is very, very complex. There's many moving parts. And so that's one accountability structure that you have, that you can use, you can improve. But also in the Office of Operational Analysis, the, basically, the numbers don't add up in terms of being able to achieve an accountability environment that you want in a government as complicated as we are. So you want departments and divisions to understand that they are, they will be looked at on a regular basis. They'll be objectively looked at on a regular basis, either externally or internally. And all departments should have that, not just the, not just the Office of Financial Management. They all need to be in an environment that they would be independently looked at on a regular basis. And that's just not happening. And we don't see a strong internal control environment. There may be one, but we don't see a lot of evidence of it in a comprehensive way. And so that's kind of the marriage of auditing and management that give you the kind of reasonable assurances you want to avoid serious problems. And the fact that we have, in my mind, not experienced serious fraud, waste, or abuse problems in our government means that we do have good, hard-working, serious, strong accountability measures somewhere. But we don't see a formalized internal control program patterned after, you know, standard government internal control programs. And we don't find it actually very much in Georgia. So there's not, there's not really, I think, a culture of that here at the level of the local government. But there is some pattern, there is some things to pattern after at the state level and the federal level and other areas, if you, if you would like to go down that road. But we do think that's really important, that that was one of the weaknesses that we see in the government is the accountability, the formal accountability structures. The boring part of governing is these kind of structures. And we would hope that we could see that strengthened a little bit. And I think that's the last slide. Very good.
Thank you for that, Beth. And Ellen and everybody else who contributed, much appreciation. Questions from commissioners? See Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I don't have as many questions. I have follow-up that I want to talk with the mayor about, maybe like tackling some of these at our next retreat, the ones that are under the mayor's and the charter office categories. But I really applaud the strategy and the way you guys approached it by tackling the 2010 one and getting the progress reports on those categories. I think that you guys assessed the challenges of your situation accurately and then grabbed what you had that had been done before and was able to give us an update because I think it gives us excellent insights into a bigger study 10 years ago and then your all's version of updating it. I found it was very interesting, the different categories that no action taken. I think that category is the one I'd like to tackle first.
Well, there's some of those, some of those no action, you know, maybe we're not required or things had changed to a point where it wasn't necessarily. But I agree with you. That's where, you know, the red is where we always want to put our attention. But I did want to mention that, and it is in the report, that we do recommend, if the mayor and commission thinks that the overview commission is a valuable resource for being able to evaluate the operations of the government, that you have the ability to request at any time. You don't have to be on the 10-year cycle. It does say in the charter, if earlier, if you want to be able to commission one that will give you a more comprehensive report, that we would probably recommend that we wait until we're under, if we're ever going to have normal operations again, I'm not so sure. But if there's ever a normal year, to schedule one after the normal year and budget for it and, you know, as I say, set up a platform for it so you're ready to go. And it's not, you know, it's not, oh, gosh, we're here at the 10-year mark and we have to do this. That it's really a valuable tool for the mayor and commission to do that kind of review. So, we do feel that we are due a more comprehensive, we do, from the overview commission perspective, think it's a good tool and think it could be a very valuable asset. So, that's why we would encourage, if you want a more comprehensive report that's more up to date, that you look at the recommendations we make and making it a good commission. And then going ahead in two years, recommission another commission. A lot of that has to do with getting the grand jury doing what they're doing. I know that we haven't had a grand jury, I think, all year. I don't think we have, I don't think we're operating in the grand jury, so.
Yeah, that's another limit there. And I appreciated your advice and I think funding allocation, planning for it, funding allocation, maybe even getting a contract person in that area to be that administration person that's focused on it instead of the volunteers having so much of a burden to them. Maybe it would be an approach. Anyway, well, thanks, thanks a ton. I really want, I really.
You bet.
I appreciate it all. Ellen, I saw your chart expertise. I appreciate that.
Other questions?
Definitely want to echo everybody's appreciation for everybody who's served on this. Yeah, I mean, Beth, Ellen, it's definitely great work, especially during a challenging time and to find ways to be really effective like this. I really appreciate. And I guess I would like to take up that, especially that first recommendation of using this experience in this time for us to really evaluate. I do believe the overview commission is a very valuable, but I also feel like we are under utilizing it. And a lot of it is because there is not the proper structure in place for it to be as effective as it could and should be, including funding, including just some of the operational structure and the charter direction. And so, I mean, I would love for us to have, you know, the oversight commission kind of process and charter review like assigned to government ops or something so that we could be evaluating this now sometime in the next couple of years so that we're really prepared by the time we have another one roll around. So, we're not somehow just trying to figure it out right before it's happening, which kind of felt like that's what happened even before the pandemic kicked in. And the other thing I love is, I mean, I definitely appreciated, although I'm on the audit committee, I appreciated that deep dive with the recommendations to the audit committee. And, you know, I'd hope also that the audit committee can maybe take up some of those recommendations and discuss them and see what can be implemented there too. So, we're really making this work in time very effective and making sure that future overview commissions are even more effective and being used to their full abilities.
Thanks, Tim. Melissa?
Yeah, I also want to thank y'all for all the hard work, especially in such challenging times. I know that it was certainly not easy. And I do want to thank you for the deep dive you took into the audit committee and the Office of Operational Analysis. You know, we've definitely had challenges and I really appreciate your recommendations. These are kind of some things that some of us on the committee have kind of batted around for a while. And at our last meeting, the committee decided to bring up some recommendations to the mayor about restructuring the committee. And Commissioner Myers and I are meeting tomorrow to kind of put that to paper, to present to the audit committee at our next meeting. So, I look forward to, you know, following through on these recommendations and getting a really functional Office of Operational Analysis and a qualified committee that can move things along.
I appreciate that. I just want to just back up just one second to address the idea of what the overview commission is. And, you know, I don't know if I mentioned in the introduction that it was designed to overview, overview, the implementation of the unification. So, that was the function of it. That's why it was created. And so, there was a lot of confusion in the beginning whether it was an oversight commission or a charter review commission. And they are, because we tried very hard in the beginning to find something similar to this, to find out, you know, what they did and how they did it in different places. And there's no such thing. There are many charter review commissions. And so, as you review what this is and what it can do as a tool for the government, I would look at that because we did feel that even though the government had evolved over these last, you know, 25 years or more since the unification, the function of the overview commission did not evolve, the mission of the overview commission didn't really evolve along with the government. So, you don't really need, I think we would all agree that unification was a success. And we achieved, for the most part, across the districts, the level of, you know, equal services and the integration of the police department and the human resources, all those really complex things that they struggled with in the early days of the unification. And that was the purpose of this commission, was to review that and see if, in fact, it was being done equitably, you know, with the problems between the city and the county, that, you know, everybody was getting what they expected with unification. So, that, you know, I think we've achieved that. I couldn't actually put a stamp on it and say for sure because I wasn't here in the beginning in 91 when they did that. But some, many of the members, I think, that I did speak to felt that we had accomplished a lot in that direction. So, that's just something to think about in terms of the function of the, whether you really want a charter overview, you want a commission that wants to review the actual charter. Does the charter satisfy the requirements? Is the charter written the way it needs to be? Are things that need to be taken out? That's a whole different thing than an oversight commission, which is actually looking at more auditing-type function, you know, looking at the internal operations. Are things being, are they functioning the way they're supposed to? Which is really kind of related but different missions.
Carol and Jesse?
Yeah, Beth, and Ellen and anyone else is on. Thank you as well. And I appreciate it. I had the opportunity to meet with Beth to talk about the audit function more in the audit committee. And she, and that was based on the presentation that I had heard before becoming on the commission. And so, that was really helpful. And I'm just remarking now that there's, you're kind of expressing some of the same things about the overview commission that I see the audit committee sort of floundering its purpose, function, and role. And so, I think that is, I appreciate your being, your whole committee being reflective about the purpose of your commission and communicating that with us. And I think also the point made about the commissions and the citizen commissions having as much material sort of historically kept there so the next time a committee gets together or even the purpose for all the commissions when they get together. Because I've been on other citizen committees where there is this floundering and you wish there was more historical documentation of what had happened the last time. I know that happened with the SPAZ committees that get together from time to time. But anyway, thank you all for your work. And I look forward to diving deeper into actual the report than I have. So, thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Jesse?
Thanks, Mayor. And yeah, just can't be said enough times. Thanks, y'all, for persisting through an absolutely chaotic year to still produce this for us. I do have a few questions. One was just, do y'all have a list of the people who were involved in generating this, the briefing for the audit committee? I know you mentioned that it was fewer than the people who had signed off on the.
Yes.
OTC report.
Yeah, so this was a focus group in the, that had started their work as a focus group and then some continued. I made the briefing for them after they did all their work. So, that was three of the members. And Ellen, you're going to have to correct me, that started on the audit focus group. So, Ellen worked on that, Brandy and Hunay Katar worked on that, on that.
Yeah, I apologize. Just the audit portion. So, we had three different groups that some people overlapped. Like I overlapped with the review of the 2010 commission and the audit committee, but I didn't, I wasn't as involved with the audit committee. And then the overview of the charter recommendations moving forward with any future overview commissions. That was Joe Fabregas, who I see is on here now, if he wants to say anything about that work. Gail Cowie. Joe, you want to jump in here and help me with this?
Yeah, Hunay was also there and Timothy was also part of the charter review.
And then for the review of the 2010, it was basically Timothy and me.
Okay, thanks. And then I was curious if y'all could respond, could elaborate on the difference between no action taken versus did not respond?
Yes. When the manager and maybe the auditor, and I'm not sure who else, reached out to the various departments and units and said, here is your list of what you were given in 2010. What have you done or not done or partially done? So, they were to respond and some departments just didn't respond.
Okay.
So, we couldn't determine whether they.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I guess it sticks out to me that in addition to really wanting to follow up on the no action taken, really thinking about following up on the did not responds too, because that's a pretty good chunk on there.
Well, one of the things that we haven't mentioned in all this was we were unclear and it was difficult to get clarification on whether we should include the constitutionally elected officers departments. Like, should we include some of the courts? Should we include the sheriff's department? Previous, the 2010 commission absolutely did. But we did notice that for a lot of the response, it was the courts who didn't respond to our request for, did you follow through on these items? So, it's another thing for you all to think about is whether you feel that the overview commission should review any of the constitutionally held elected official departments.
Thanks. Well, I guess my last question was, are any of y'all interested in continuing to communicate about this after today? I know you've already put in over a year, but.
I'm more than happy to. So, put me down for yes. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thanks, Ellen.
There are several members who are really dedicated to trying to run a lot of this stuff to ground. And we're disappointed, I'd have to say a handful, that we're very disappointed in that vote in August to finish the work based on just those two approved focus groups. But, and so, there are a couple of members who will continue and are serving on other boards and in other capacities in the community. So, these are people that are real doers. So, and I'll certainly facilitate any of that that you would like.
I would say that those of us who kind of hung on until the end, we're not always sure that we would get to this point. But I really do appreciate that, and I see Joe and Hunay and Beth and I and Timothy and Gail and a couple, you know, a couple of other people really did stick it out through to the end. And having a smaller group in some ways is easier. But we felt very strongly when we lost a lot of our members that not having representation from every district was a major problem.
Yeah, so, you know, we have a lot of folks that work from the university and a lot of academics. And, you know, when you talk about your study, you want to make sure that you maintain a level of validity. And that's where we thought we were struggling with. And so, even at this point, there's concern that, you know, the report that you have is not necessarily.
Did Elizabeth's audio cut out or is that just me?
Oh, I can hear it. We lost. So, as I said, I just wanted to reiterate that idea that we wanted to have a valid report. We wanted to have something that had, you know, all the integrity that we could possibly imbue in it and not to be unbalanced in the sense of representation, which was part of the role of the overview commission was to represent each of the districts equally. Again, because it was to evaluate unification. So, if they had unequal representation, I'm not sure how important that is, again, as that evolves, as it evolves, the mission of the overview commission. But in general, we're organized by district. So, we would suspect that it's important to have representation from across the whole government.
This is Joe Fabregas. If any of the commissioners wants to dig into the charter recommendations, that's something that I'm willing to keep working on. Kind of give you kind of thoughts behind what the report that came out. And it's kind of difficult to put all the different options in one single report without much background. But I'm certainly willing to discuss it with anyone that would like to.
Thanks to all of you for that willingness. Really appreciate it. Since you were so highly paid for the first stretch already and willing to extend that.
As Joe mentioned too, there's a lot of ways to manage the, you know, we actually, some members thought we were stepping on toes by actually making recommendations of charter language that we were going beyond our, you know, our mandate. But the other side of that is if you actually recommend charter language, it's something that you can start with to work through. If it's something that you accept and you think it's worthwhile, then you've got something to start, you know, a baseline to start with to make the changes.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Thank you too. I wanted to thank Mayor Gerch. You were tremendous support. You did, you always were there to help us along the way. And I wanted to thank the Office of Operational Analysis, who gave us such terrific support during this, who took on trying to help in, like I say, very disparate circumstances, all kinds of things going in all directions. They were very supportive and gave us everything we asked for, we got. And to our manager, who, every piece of paper that we asked for and everything that we looked for and able to evaluate, Manager Williams was able to provide that for us, very responsive, very supportive. And we do appreciate it. And all the other folks in the departments who came and gave us our briefings and tried to educate us on the operation of the government, we really appreciated that. And that helped to be able to turn around and try to provide something of value.
Thanks. This was very valuable. And to every member of the group, please pass along our appreciation.
You bet.
You'll be safe. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, we're gonna shift to the annual presentation we wish, excuse me, we received from Malden and Jenkins, our external auditor. And I think Mr. Holden is here to do that. I'm gonna make him presenter so that he can share any materials that he has with him.
Excuse me, Mayor Gerch, but Josh Carroll of Malden and Jenkins will be doing the presentation.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll share my screen if everyone can see the PowerPoint here.
There we go.
Everyone see?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate everyone logging on and taking the time to hear about the audit and the overall results of the audit. You know, the, the county puts together a CAFR, a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's a hundred-plus-page elaborate document. Instead of going through that, I have this little presentation just to kind of concisely go through the overall results of our 2020 audit. Kind of what to expect from the presentation. I want to talk a little bit about Malden and Jenkins, go over the results of the audit, have a couple of financial ratios and trends, a couple of comments, recommendations, and then questions at the end. But if you have any questions as I'm going along, you can feel free to chime in and ask me, or you can certainly wait till the end, whatever works best for you guys. So Malden and Jenkins, we've been around over a hundred years now, serving the Southeast. And government is a huge niche in the firm. It's over 25% now. And it's all that I do. I spend 100% of my time serving state and local governments and almost everyone assigned to the county's audit team is in the same boat. We, it's all we do and we bring a lot of expertise to the field. I was the Engagement Director, was ultimately responsible for the audit. Meredith Lipson is on the call as well. And Doug Moses, who's not on the call, but they were kind of quality control partners and review partners supporting the audit. Meredith was kind of a new set of eyes this year. So we try to get a new partner every year to do the concurring review. And so she was a new set of eyes this year. So the results of 2020 audit, so the state code requires an audit and the financial statements are the responsibility of the county's management. The objective of our audit is to express an opinion as to whether or not your statements are materially correct with generally accepted accounting principles. And we followed all the generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion, which, which is what you would hope to get. So as far as we're concerned, the statements are materially correct. We also audited two federal grant programs in our single audit this year. We audited the Federal Transit Grant and the Community Development Block Grant. And we issued an unmodified, clean opinion on the compliance of those programs. So everything we looked at, all the 14 compliance requirements that the government is required to follow, we felt you were in compliance with those two programs. So all in all, a really clean audit from a accounting standpoint, financial reporting and compliance. Next slide. So if I was a Commissioner, I think I'd want to know, do we have any unusual or aggressive accounting policies or estimates or judgment that is used in our financial statements? And you don't. We spend a lot of time looking at the estimates and judgments and they're based on historical trends and information and similar estimates that other county governments in the state use. The big ones are your pension and OPEB assumptions that actuaries use. And we spent a lot of time looking at those and we felt pretty good about them and they are pretty standard from what we see. So there's nothing really unusual or aggressive there that I think you should be concerned about. Our relationship with management, so the audit kind of worked how it was supposed to work. You know, everything we asked for was provided to us. We don't have any departments or any offices that seem to be covering things up or limiting us from getting the information we need. Audit goes smoothly every year and it just kind of works how it's supposed to. And we had no audit adjustments or past adjustments. It's a very clean audit that's highly unusual. There's very few governments that we audit that don't have audit adjustments. So it's a testament to the quality job the Finance Department is doing with all the transactions and large volumes of revenues and expenses flowing through the government. It's accounted for very well and it's very unusual. So hats off to the Finance Team for another great audit. Next slide. This slide, we are independent. We don't do anything other than the county's external audit. We don't provide any advisory fees, I mean advisory services that we get paid for that might influence our opinion as your external auditor. So on to the financial trends. So this is probably the most important financial ratio. It's what the rating agencies, bond agencies would look at. It's your fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. And the GFOA kind of sets the standards for governments and they recommend two months at a minimum. And that's aligned with the county's minimum policy of two months. And we're above that at 26%. 6% of that is assigned fund balance. The majority of that is the Resiliency and Prosperity Package that we've budgeted for and we've yet to spend that money, but we've kind of budgeted for it, so it's set aside. And there's also, you can see, we kind of trended down for a few years and in the last few years, we've been trending back up. So we're building up our fund balance, which is certainly good. And these COVID times, if unknown, we really didn't know what was going to happen and may or may not know what's going to happen going forward. So it's good to have a healthy fund balance. And I think a lot of that trend is our revenues have increased a little bit and we've also started not transferring money out of the General Fund. We've been funding our capital purchases with current year revenues instead of using our fund balance. And I believe that was kind of a plan we developed three, four years ago. And you can see financially the impact that's having on our, our fund balance. So in these uncertain times, it's, it's a healthy fund balance. It's what the governments recommend two to three months. And I think you have a pretty healthy fund balance. The next slide, our budget to actual. This is the General Fund, you know, again, a testament to the Finance Department. With COVID coming in in March, I don't think anyone really knew our sales tax and all our other revenues were going to come in, what kind of revenues we were going to have. And our revenues came in right at about 1%. So, you know, another good budgeting by the Finance and the Budget Team. And we saved about a little over $10 million in our expenditure budget. Most of that was COVID-related when buildings and certain areas weren't open and operating. We saved a lot of money there. And we also have about three and a half million in that Resiliency and Prosperity Package that we didn't spend and we're budgeted to spend that in the coming years. So pretty good budget to actual in a year of really uncertain times with COVID. This revenue is by source. This slide, you know, property taxes and sales taxes continue to be our largest source of revenues. It's been consistent year over year, the last five years. The percentage of those is weighted pretty much the same. So we have a good mix of revenues that support us and it's been consistent year to year. Expenditures, this is by function. Public Safety continues to be the largest. Expenditure function, it's, that's consistent with all other governments as well. And in 2019, we changed the Sheriff's Office. We moved it out of judicial to public safety. So you can see the big jump there, but it really was flat when you consider just reallocating those expenses. So our expenses again are pretty consistent year to year. This is just expenses by type. Personnel Services and Operating are about 90%. And that's also been consistent over the last five years. The Personnel Service has kind of ticked up a little bit as a percentage and that's as we started transferring less money out, as I mentioned earlier. So the transfers have come down and our percentage of Personnel Service has come up a little bit. So, so the comments and recommendations, we didn't have any findings or which would be a significant deficiency or material weakness in controls. Nothing rose to a level to that degree that we thought it needed to be reported. So these are more kind of management points and the next two, three slides are repeats, the segregation of duties with our elected officials. And they've been there for a number of years. One or two of them have come off in the past, but it kind of just deals with segregation of duties and in some of these elected official offices, they have one employee, maybe two employees that are handling an entire transaction. Primarily it's cash receiving and dispersment. And so that creates some level of, you know, risk of misappropriation, whether it's intentionally or unintentionally. And so we continue to make this recommendation of trying to do anything we can to segregate these duties for a better internal control practice. It's oftentimes not cost-effective to hire an employee just to segregate the duties. So I don't know that these will go away, but hopefully we can certainly work to try and continue to work and segregate these duties as we can. And that was the next two, three slides. And then GASB is always busy. There's, seems like new standards every year keeps me and the Finance Team busy implementing these new standards. COVID did kind of delay the implementation of most of the standards that were on the horizon. We were supposed to implement GASB 84 and that got pushed back. So we'll implement that next year. And it's, it mostly deals with our elected officials and changes the definition of what a liability is. And these elected officials are going to report a net position. Now, where in the past is they just had assets and offsetting matching liabilities. It's going to be a project for the Finance Team, but I don't think it will really significantly change the county's financial statements. And the same with GASB 87, which is going to come in 2022. Some liabilities will have to come up on the balance sheet that haven't been reported before, but I don't think it will be a big number for the county. It will be a project for the Finance Team, certainly, but it will not be a liability, like if you remember back to when we had to put on the pension and OPEB liabilities, which those are much bigger numbers. And so this, I don't really think this will impact the county's financial statements in a material way. And there's, there's several more on the next slide or two, but those are the two big ones that are going to be coming in the next two years that we're going to implement. And then we do continue to provide free CPE to all of our clients and a handful of the Finance Team comes to those and they're open to anyone at the counties that wants to learn about governmental accounting. I can get you signed up. That, that's it. And you know, it's a clean audit. The audit worked how it's supposed to work. We really enjoy working with the county and it's a wonderful audit and I'll take questions if anyone has any.
Thanks Josh. Questions from Commissioners?
I have a question. I don't know if you can see my video. And I think my question is more for the manager. We, we see a pretty drastic jump in public safety General Fund expenses from 2018 to 2019. And, and you know, it's remained about the same level in, in 2020. And a decrease in expenses by the Judicial Branch. Can, is there any explanation for that? I mean, it's, it's about a, more than a 30% increase of the overall public safety budget and about a good 15% of the overall. It's, it's on the screen.
Yeah, Josh, Josh covered that. Josh, do you just want to repeat that again, sir?
Yeah, I, I'll repeat that. So that was really just a reallocation to comply with the State Charter of Accounts. So we moved the Sheriff's Office or reclassified it from the Judicial Function to Public Safety. So if you, if you see from 18 to 19, the Public Safety had quite a jump. And the Judicial had quite a decrease. And overall, that was pretty flat. So it was just really a reallocation
Okay.
To comply with the state
It basically has to do with the Sheriff's Department now falling under Public Safety rather than Judicial.
Correct. And that was to comply with the, this State Charter of Accounts that Georgia puts out. So we just reallocated it to comply with that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Link, if I might, that's the major cause of it. I know back along that time period, we also added a few Deputy Sheriff positions with the jail, but the, the mainstay of that is exactly what Mr. Carroll shared.
Yeah, I know operating expenses went up with the new jail coming online, which has been a few years now. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one question. Josh, you spoke to the Municipal and Magistrate Court Recommendations as something that's been a recurring recommendation. And I was curious if someone here could maybe elaborate on why those haven't gone anywhere? Is that just because it's outside our direct purview? Or is it more because of the lack of it necessarily making sense financially that you had kind of alluded to, Josh?
I can speak to that. And there, Commissioner Hull, there have been, there was another situation in the Clerk Courts Budget as well, where we added a full-time position. So I think, I won't speak for, for Mr. Carroll or the Auditors. This is something that I think you said that you see in other communities in these smaller judicial officers, offices where you don't have a lot of folks. And it's a, it's something that you could be disposed of by hiring additional person. It's just, it's just additional funds that you have to spend.
That's correct. This is certainly not isolated to Athens in any way. It's common in most court offices across the state. Not all of them, but the majority of them.
So a few years ago, or maybe a couple of years ago, the Clerk of Courts was also listed on here. And at that point, we went ahead and added an additional position and it, it rolled off because of the appropriate oversight there.
Correct. And I believe that the Judicial Court may have been on here in the past as well and fallen off.
But Commissioner Hull, it's no resistance on behalf of any of the elected officials or ourselves on that. Just a financial issue.
Thanks.
Well, Mayor, if I might,
Please.
Of, of course, I want to thank our, our Auditors and the way that they go about their work. And I want to thank our staff for the amount of time and the information that they share. And I want to note how well managed our financial operations are. I want to give credit to Finance Director David Boyd and his staff. You may not know this, but the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, they give a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for jurisdictions that have earned that. And in 2019, this would be the 34th consecutive year that Athens Clark County has earned that distinction, which I think is, is amazing. It says a lot about our current staff and the staff before that. You know, Mr. Carroll talked about fund balance. You saw some of the trends a few years ago, really a conscious effort to change those transfers out, which helped with our fund balance growth, which put us in a good position during this pandemic. Mr. Carroll mentioned that we had yet to spend some of that resiliency package. And I want to say that this is as of June 30th, 2020. Of course, we're in '21 now and we're spending those funds. I also want to point out for, for you and those that are watching that from a bond rating perspective, we are currently at Moody's AA1, which, what that means is the rating agencies look at us as a safe bet because we are well managed financially. And so therefore, so it's, it's really sort of a an objective review of our financial health, if you will. But also there are some benefits there, you know, when we have to go and borrow funds for for projects, the lower interest rate. So I say all that to say that, um, you know, this, this is sort of, uh, not the type of thing that we talk about every day. It's something that quietly happens and things are happening and people are, are doing their work very well. Uh, but this is an opportunity to hold our staff up because they've just done a fantastic job and, and, and the decisions the mayor and commission have made over the years, uh, that the government is in very good financial health at this point.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blaine. Thank you, Josh and Meredith and everyone over there. Malden and Jenkins, we really appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Absolutely. Well, y'all be safe, have a good night.
You too.
All right, y'all, we are going to, um, move on to, uh, follow up from a conversation we had a few weeks ago. And, um, Captain Harrison Daniel from Athens Clark County Police Department is going to talk more broadly than we did, uh, recently about use of force. So Captain Daniel, thank you so much for being here and Chief Spruill. And, um, I think we've got a couple of other members of the department as well.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you and, uh, thank you, Commission, for giving us an opportunity uh, to speak to y'all again tonight. Uh, can y'all hear me okay and can y'all see my screen? Okay. Uh, before I get started, um, if the chief has any opening words, I'd like to give him an opportunity to, to, uh, say anything at the beginning. If not, then I'll begin the presentation.
Uh, no, I just, uh, want to reiterate that this is a, a follow-up to some questions that were asked him before that we report out on, um, our use of force practices, policies, and then talk a little bit about some of the incidents that we saw in 2019 involving officer-involved shootings and man civil unrest incident that occurred, occurred in May of 2020. So we'll, we'll go through this. Um, Captain Daniels has a PowerPoint presentation. Um, I think if we allow him to go ahead and move through it, many of the questions that the commission may have will be answered during his presentation. We'll certainly leave some time at the end of, uh, his presentation, uh, for an opportunity to ask and have as many questions answered as we possibly can. So with that said, I'd like to turn it back over to Captain Harris, uh, Captain Daniels and let him go.
All right, thank you, Chief. So as the chief mentioned, uh, the purpose of our meeting tonight is it's a follow-up to our January 14th work session, uh, concerning, uh, the policies and practices of Athens Clark County Police Department, uh, on use of force. And, um, it's in response to some, I guess, some more specific questions from, uh, the mayor and commission. And, uh, we're going to cover that tonight. So as part of our, uh, presentation, uh, we'll cover some of the, the purpose, dynamics and the law related to use of force, uh, some of our specific policies, our practices, our training, what those look like. Uh, and then, uh, in, in response to your questions, uh, we will do a brief overview of, uh, the officer-involved shootings from 2019 as well as, uh, the protest response on May 31st of 2020. So before we get into a, a broad discussion about use of force, I do want to, uh, underscore uh, that our department, uh, is involved in a lot of other activities, uh, work efforts, uh, and many of our outcomes have nothing to do with force at all. In fact, we achieve a lot of great things, uh, without force. And it's really a very, very small, uh, percentage of, of what our officers actually do on a day-to-day basis. Uh, they are involved in a lot more. Um, and, and though it's an extremely small percentage, we do recognize how critical those moments are, uh, but i- it is worth underscoring that, uh, the vast majority of what we do, uh, involves no force at all. Uh, and that's extremely significant. On that line, uh, I ran some preliminary 2020 numbers. Again, I say these are preliminary, uh, because, uh, as we'll talk about with our policy a little bit, uh, further, uh, we do, uh, have 45 days for our supervisors and command staff to conduct investigations post, uh, event, uh, when an officer does end up, uh, using force. Uh, so therefore some information may still be incoming, uh, and this number may change. But, uh, when we look at, uh, these preliminary numbers, we can see really visually and by the actual numbers, uh, how rarely our officers actually apply force, uh, in relation to how often we're in contact with the community. Uh, and so at 0.14% of all of our police citizen contacts, uh, that's an extremely small percentage. And I think that's worth, uh, noting just to put, uh, uh, our activities and how force fits into our total activities with, as a department, put that into context. Another thing that's, we want to underscore, uh, when it comes to, uh, force is that one of the unique things about a police officer is, uh, they swear an oath. Uh, they swear an oath to a duty, uh, that obligates them to respond and, uh, to restore order, to protect people from harm and, and to ensure the safety of themselves, their fellow officers and the community. Uh, and that obligation, uh, doesn't allow them to necessarily run away or retreat in the face of a dangerous situation. Uh, and so, uh, what that means is that, uh, our officers are often put in, uh, very critical moments, uh, and, and they do so out of a sworn obligation, uh, when they start the job. Uh, and so they don't have, uh, necessarily a duty to retreat or an obligation to retreat. They have an obligation to respond. We also want to talk about the purpose, the dynamics and some law related to use of force before we get into, uh, some of the departmental policies and practices. Uh, so when an officer does respond, uh, to an incident, uh, they're often highly charged, uh, they're, uh, emotional, um, and that's even those incidents where there's no force at all being used. Uh, sometimes we're, you know, we are called to the moments where people are having very difficult time and, uh, there's a lot of emotions running very high. Um, and then when you combine on top of that, an incident where force is required, when an officer is responding to the actions of another and they have to do so forcefully, those are very stressful events for the individual involved, uh, any witnesses or family members as well as the officer. Um, they're also highly unpredictable. They evolve very rapidly. Uh, and then it puts the officers in a position where they have to make split second decisions and judgment calls at the blink of an eye. And, and those are very difficult, uh, moments for officers. Um, but that's part of why we have policies and training and we'll get into that in a few minutes. So anytime an officer, uh, does apply or use force during the course of their duties, uh, the first thing that's important to understand is that is a response. It's a response to the actions or the resistance of the individual that they are, uh, encountering. Um, it is a reaction to something that is done first by the individual and the officer is responding to, uh, that person's actions. When they do so, when they do use force, uh, they're attempting to achieve a lawful object, uh, objective, and that must be what they're trying to achieve. And that can be, uh, attempting to place the person, uh, into custody and place him under arrest because they've committed a, a crime. Uh, that could be to prevent their escape. Uh, it could be to protect the, uh, to prevent the person from harming the officer or another individual. There's a variety of, of reasons. Uh, but they must be achieving a lawful objective, uh, when they do apply force. And primarily, uh, especially in the case of lethal force, they're attempting to stop a threat. Um, and, uh, they're trying to stop a, a threat of harm to themselves or others. And they're trying to bring a volatile situation under, under control and do so as safely as possible. Now we hear a lot of talk about, uh, use of force continuum, especially in some of the national dialogue, uh, uh, in 2020 and early parts of 2021. And when we look at a continuum on force, we really want to think of it not as a linear continuum, but more as a wheel. And the reason that's critical is due to that dynamic nature and the rapidly evolving, uh, circumstances that you can be, uh, encounter during an incident. Uh, and understand that you can go from, uh, verbal commands or just your officer presence, uh, to hard strikes or lethal, uh, force in the blink of an eye. And then, uh, conversely from that, you could be in a moment where, uh, an impact weapon or a hard strike with your fist is a justifiable and appropriate use of force. And then something changes and immediately deescalates to the point that that's no longer justifiable and, uh, verbal commands or softer forms of control would be what's appropriate. Uh, and so the wheel is an extremely critical model when we're looking at a, a continuum, uh, so that we can understand that, you know, an officer can kind of go any direction at any moment and then come back toward the center and go a different direction, just depending on, again, how they need to respond to the actions or the resistance of the individual that they've encountered. This slide may look familiar to y'all, you know, from our last, um, meeting. Uh, this is a slide that helps to me visually highlight, um, some of the dynamics related to force and, and, um, what we're realistically looking at and thinking about from a departmental standpoint, uh, when we're putting policies into place, the equipment we're looking at, uh, the type of oversight procedures that we have, how we train our officers. We recognize that, uh, every tool we have, uh, that's on our tool belt, uh, every strategy we might employ, uh, every tactic we, we take, the verbal commands that we use, um, whether we, uh, how we create distance or put barriers between us and, and the individual, everything we do comes with a certain risk and a certain limitation to it. Uh, for example, some of the tools we have, um, they have certain limitations in terms of the distance that they're actually applicable or capable of being used. Uh, some of them, uh, may not work on all individuals, you know, for example, pepper, uh, pepper spray. Uh, not everybody is as affected by pepper spray, um, as, as the next. And so one person, uh, it may be extremely painful and the next person, uh, they can tolerate. And you can think of that in the same sense that some people like food that's more hot than others are willing to tolerate. Uh, and so it's not always, it doesn't have the same level of effectiveness on every person. So there's limitations and then there's risks, uh, which is why we look for as many options as possible. I mentioned a couple of them a second ago, you know, creating distance, barriers, uh, those are some of our de-escalation strategies, uh, using verbal commands, the tools that we have at our disposal. Everything that we have creates kind of a web of options that we, uh, have available to try to improve, uh, resolving that situation safely. And so as you see from the graphic and, and what you saw in our last meeting, is that the more options we have at our disposal, uh, the more likely we can overcome the particular risks and the particular limitations of each one of our, uh, strategies, each one of our tools, each one of our tactics that we might use in a particular situation. Again, this is a familiar slide or it should be. Uh, we talked about this last time, but it, it bears repeating, uh, because there's a, uh, a significant amount of law that has, uh, come before, um, our time today that has established precedence for what's acceptable, what's legally justifiable, when a police officer has to respond to the resistance or actions of another and use force. And these are just two of your, um, uh, seminal or, or precedent cases, flagship cases, if you will, uh, Tennessee Garner and Graham V. Connor. And the first one, uh, really established the Fourth Amendment standard, uh, particularly with deadly force. Uh, and so what the court recognized is that, uh, anytime an officer chooses, uh, to use force as a response to the actions of an individual, uh, they, that it's a seizure of that person, which makes it a Fourth Amendment issue. Uh, and then based on that, uh, the standard with which it's evaluated is objective reasonableness. Uh, and that's been upheld, uh, since 1985 through many, 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 uh, appellate cases related to force. Graham V. Connor essentially carried the same standard over to lesser forms of force, less lethal or non-lethal force. Uh, and then Graham V. Connor also established a, um, a, a set of guidelines for analyzing the force. And so what they said is it had to be, uh, reasonable from the perspective of another officer or a prudent officer, uh, facing similar circumstances, uh, that when we evaluate it, we have to reject that hindsight 2020 bias that we might have. You know, the Monday morning quarterbacking when we can sit in a comfortable condition, replay a video multiple times, uh, talk about it, uh, run the scenario through our heads. Uh, the officer didn't have that at their disposal. They had a moments, uh, uh, you know, one second or, or a few seconds or a moment or two to make a decision based on what was known to them at that time. And so that also means that we, we can't factor in information that we learned after the fact it wasn't available to the officer when we're evaluating force. And then we have to look at the totality of the circumstances, uh, facing the officer when we're evaluating force. And that's from the, the legal standpoint. And what we'll talk about in a minute, our policies, we, we mirror our policies after, um, the legal standards. Uh, and then we do add a few extra layers at our department to, uh, provide even more, uh, restriction or safety and security when it comes to how our officers, uh, apply force. So now let's pivot over to our policies, our practices and our training. Um, the first thing that I want to emphasize, our department absolutely values the sanctity of human life and it places that value above every other value that we have. Uh, and we instill that through our policy. It's repeated, uh, through our use of force policy. Uh, it's a practice of our department. It is, uh, reiterated throughout training, uh, to our officers. Uh, and so that is, that is our utmost value, uh, when we are interacting with the public. Now as a department, uh, we have a responsibility in, in terms of managing our activities to mitigate risks and to mitigate the risk that is associated with, uh, use of force events. And we do, do so primarily through four, um, capacities. The first being policy, we set policy in place to guide or regulate how force is used by our officers. We provide oversight. Uh, there is a, a full and, and robust, uh, comprehensive reporting process and investigative process that has to occur each time an officer uses force. Uh, training, we provide some extremely, uh, good and high-level training to our officers to teach them, uh, instill in them de-escalation as part of training, how to safely apply force techniques to do so as safely as possible and minimize injury. Uh, and this is reoccurring training. This is not just a one-time thing. Uh, and our training, uh, we keep up to date with best practices, national standards, um, other standards set by, uh, accrediting agencies, uh, and then equipment. You know, we, um, work hard to, uh, equip our officers with the safest equipment, the most effective equipment, uh, to stay up to date with that so that we are giving them tools that, uh, we believe are tested, we believe are, um, reliable and will work when, when it's absolutely necessary. Uh, and then we can, they can use them safely, uh, and effectively. So we have a whole, uh, chapter on use of force in our policy. And what you're going to see pop up on your screen here in just a moment is, um, where anyone in the public can access these policies. And so what I've, I've kicked us over to our, this is our live website as we see it right now. And what you can see is that, um, our policies are available online and you could scroll down and you can click the link for anyone and pull up that policy and anyone in the public can do this. Um, and so we have an, an overall overarching use of force policy. It governs when and how officers use force, how we, uh, how they report it, how it's investigated. Uh, and then beyond that, we have policies specific to individual tools or, uh, devices that might be used. Um, and these can each be accessed online. Additionally, at the top of this page, you can see we have a form that's available and this allows for the public, if they choose to review any of these policies and read them and they want to understand, they can provide us comment and feedback. And we're, you know, open and willing to listen to that feedback and really consider ideas and options from the public and, um, and put them into place where they're reasonable, they're practical and they're something that we can achieve and improve outcome, uh, for community safety. And so we think this is critical in, um, ensuring that we're staying responsive to our community when we develop our policies and when we update our policies. Now moving back over to, uh, this page, kind of what you can see, this is just a sample of, of the first page on our use of force. Uh, they're updated routinely as, as we get, uh, you know, a law changes or a case law occurs, we're updating our policies to stay as current as we can with. with legal guidance, guidance from other organizations, accrediting agencies and best standards. We're constantly reviewing and constantly updating. And so we go through a routine process with this. And then we also do it during the interim between our standard reviews if something comes to our attention that we need to update. As far as expectations, standards accreditation, you've heard me mention this a little bit already. From the expectation standpoint, one of the big things that's come out of 2020 from a national perspective has been the Eight Can't Wait campaign. You know, and we talked about this a little bit last time. It's it's put forth a series of recommendations for policing. And we think these are perfectly viable recommendations. And in fact, as we covered last time, and what I'm sure the commission remembers is that we've already addressed a lot of these over the last 20 years of policing in this county. For example, banning chokeholds. Our department has restricted chokeholds or neck restraints for the better part of two decades, except in cases where lethal force would be appropriate. Shooting and moving vehicles, again, a practice that has been restricted except in the most extreme circumstances. And this is spelled out in our policy. And so, you know, we've our department, you know, without bragging too much, we've been ahead of a lot of these changes that are being recommended at the national level for other organizations around the country. And so we do think that's worth emphasizing. The 21st century policing is also really important. We have been modeling 21st century policing for many years. A lot of the principles in Eight Can't Wait, a lot of what comes out of the President's Task Force on 21st century policing from 2015. A lot of that we've been doing for many years. And what you can see here that's we've put on our webpage in our transparency and policing page is a flip book that will walk you through the entire list of recommendations from the 21st century task force, the policing report and the task force from 2015. And what we've done here is we've indicated where we're compliant in cases where we're not compliant or where certain recommendations are not applicable to our agency. And we made this available to the public. The ones where we are partial or not compliant, these are areas that we're still working. And then in the future, we do, we have in the works a more interactive document that we're going to release that will actually have links within this document that will take you to the proofs, the examples that show you how we're compliant with each one of these recommendations. Again, this is available to the public for inspection. And then we invite comment or feedback related to any of these. And, you know, we look forward to presenting the second edition of this document shortly. Also, a lot of use of force policies and our practices are covered under national accreditation. And we've been a nationally accredited agency since 1987 through Kalia. You know, that's the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, as well as the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. We've been accredited accredited through them for many years. That's Georgia accreditation. And then the Kalia accreditation extends over to our communications department as well. This is an independent organization that comes in on a routine basis and does audits of our department. They audit our policies, our procedures, specifically in part, use of force. And they assess us, are we meeting the standards that they've set? And there's in, there's an excess of 400 standards. And we've been accredited, like I said, since 1987. And we've been accredited at their highest level of excellence, which means that we are meeting all the standards that are required of us to meet that level of accreditation. And so what's important about that is we're subjecting, in particular, our policies, practices and our standards on use of force to national standards and accreditation at the national level. So we talked a little bit last time about some of the numbers. We put all of our use of force numbers annually online. And again, we're going to kick over because I want to keep reemphasizing how much information we're trying to put out to the public. This is our transparency in policing page, as you can see it right now live. And so our use of force is just part of what we're putting up here. You know, we're including crime trends and rates, our departmental personnel and demographics, other numbers related to police activities. At the top here, you can see where you would access that 21st century policing report and other things. But what you see here is a little more detailed breakdown of our numbers over the years. And you can, and you can see what types of force are being used. And then there's even greater detail related to those numbers when you go to our annual compliance reports. And I'll show you just a quick example of where those are here. Particularly with use of force, and you can see we've got the last several years here. And you can click that. And it'll open up the specific annual report that we produce as part of our compliance with national accreditation. And this is really a deeper dive into the, if it'll load, the deep, a deeper dive into our actual practices. And this again is available for public inspection. And so it can be reviewed. And if there's any feedback that anyone has based on that, we're absolutely willing to listen and have discussion about that. And if there's areas for improvement, you know, we're looking for feedback on where we can improve in certain areas. When we talk about training on use of force, looking at our 2020 numbers, our officers went through nearly seven, or nearly 10,000 post-certified or post-credit hours of training specifically related to either de-escalation or specifically how the application of force, you know, use of firearms or proper use of taser or batons. And when we look at those numbers in total, between de-escalation and use of force from 2020, 65% or the majority of our hours of training for our officers went to specifically de-escalation courses. And that's extremely important because de-escalation is our first, one of our first strategies when it comes to a potential encounter where force may be required. But even within the 35%, those particular courses on firearms or defensive tactics or impact weapons, we're emphasizing internally, when we teach those courses to our officers, de-escalation within those courses themselves. So even that 35% contains a significant amount of training on de-escalation. Additionally, some of that 35% are, those are mandated hours through the state. Every officer has to go through a certain amount of use of force training every year. But this is an extremely important statistic and we're very proud of this, you know, how much training we've put into de-escalation in particular. A part of our oversight process is a circular reporting, investigation and feedback loop. And this slide may look familiar. I included this one again because it's an extremely important part of our practice on use of force. And so anytime an officer applies force during an incident, you know, as a response to the actions of the individual, they're required to report it. And they're required to report it within a short timeframe. And in fact, the supervisors, unless circumstances dictate that they can't otherwise arrive on scene, they're required to come to the scene as promptly as possible and begin their investigation. Now that investigation is permitted to have 45 days to complete. And then at that time, they would forward the findings of their investigation, basically what happened, how did it happen? You know, what policies applied here? Were the officers, were they within the department's policies or were they not? They have to submit those findings to their commanders. The commanders then review it, have to make a determination on whether they concur or don't with the supervisor's findings. And then eventually that kicks over to our internal affairs function. And that's a secondary review outside of the chain of command of the officer. And so it's just a secondary level of oversight, a little bit more independent and objective than the chain of command. Based on all of that and the assessment of that incident, even when our officers are within policy, sometimes we say, well, we might need to change policy or we don't like the policy and how it applies here. Or we still need to do something different to improve training and improve the way our officers might respond in this particular situation. That feedback makes it through our policy development process as well as our training unit. And then we'll push out updated training, updated policy to try to impact future similar incidents to the one that was investigated and reviewed. And so we're constantly running this circular feedback loop to try to improve our activities, try to reduce the amount of force that we use, try to reduce the level of force that is used when it is applied. And we're constantly trying to improve our practices. And so having talked about use of force, both generally and then our general practices in response to y'all's requests, I'd like to cover now the 2019 officer-involved shootings. And we'll do a quick overview or a brief overview of each one of those incidents. And it's kind of what, or kind of the broad look at those situations. So the first thing is that per our policy, anytime an officer is involved in a shooting, it's independently investigated by the GBI. And then those findings are submitted to the Office of the District Attorney for review. We don't investigate our own officer-involved shootings from a criminal perspective. But in addition to the criminal case, we do a separate administrative investigation internally. And that's specifically looking at the policies, the training, the procedures that were applicable to that particular incident. So when we look at 2019 and we compare it back to our total number of encounters, and then we go beyond that and really spread that out to a five-year period. We look at, what we see is that officer-involved shootings or uses of lethal force for our department represents 0.0015% of all of our activity. That's an extremely low number. And so the reason that I want to emphasize that is to to show that these things are extremely rare. It's not something that happens on a daily basis. 2019 was a complete aberration from our norm over the past 20-plus years. And so that actually skews this number higher than it would have been without that aberration or that exiting our normal statistics. But despite it being rare, these are the most critical events that our department encounters. And at the heart of every lethal force event's a person. And there's two sides to that coin. There's a citizen involved or more than one. And there's an officer involved or more than one officer. And what we do try to recognize first and foremost is that there's something there that has led that citizen to that moment in time. Whether it's crisis-related or it's led them to commit a violent assault on another person or commit a robbery or some other type of crime or whatever it is, but there's something that's led them there to that moment in time. And that's worth us looking at. Additionally, when it comes to the officer, it's it's an extremely life-changing event for an officer as well. And though we recognize that very often the citizen may lose their life and an officer, if they do not, it's still life-altering for the officer. And one thing that's worth mentioning to me is when it comes to the unique role that police officers have in the community, this is a job where we hire somebody based on a presumed set of skills, abilities, characteristics and traits. And then we hire them and we train them to do a particular job and we give them tools to do that job. And then we send them out with an expectation that they have a duty to carry out their job. And then what may happen is that the officer does that job and they do it based on the training that they're offered, based on the tools they're given. And then they immediately become a de facto suspect in a criminal investigation. And that's very, that's very difficult for our officers. But the point is, there are two or more lives that are deeply impacted by each one of these events, which is why they're so critical for us to get right and why we do spend a lot of time investigating and evaluating these incidents. So when we look at 2019, we had six incidents. They involve six particular individuals and 14 officers. Two officers were involved in more than one of those events. The initial dispatched information indicated that we were responding to one domestic, one peeping tom, a stolen vehicle related to a domestic. One was an unknown problem. The other was a stalking case that was domestic in nature. And one was simply a noise complaint. And then several of these incidents actually highlighted after the fact something we didn't know going into the incident based on the limited information that was available at the time. You know, the suicide by cop phenomenon that we've seen across the country. A few additional details to note is that in each one of these cases, the individual threatened to use or did use a lethal weapon offensively against the officers. And the officers responded by using lethal force. And in three of these incidents, the individual either shot at the officers or pointed a gun. In one case, it was a realistic-looking replica at the officers. On two of the incidents, the officers were charged by the person while brandishing a knife in a threatening manner. And then one particular incident, the individual swung a machete at an officer within inches of his face. And so in each one of these cases, there was use or threatened use of a lethal weapon by the individual. Our officer, our department values transparency. And with each one of these cases, if you recall, we held press conferences and we answered questions from the public to provide as much information as we could. We also released body cam video within a short timeframe after these incidents to try to provide the most objective information possible to the public so that they had an understanding of what happened and to keep them informed. And then also, each case, like I mentioned earlier, was investigated by the GBI. And the officer's actions were cleared by the district attorney, meaning that the district attorney reviewed the case from the GBI and determined that each officer was justifiable under the law and the actions they took in discharging their firearms during those incidents. However, despite legal justification, our department looks beyond that. We want to improve how we operate to try to mitigate the likelihood that though legally justified, our officers will need to use force, lethal force again in the future. And so even though in those particular cases, our officers were ruled to be legally justified, our department still implemented certain protocol changes for responding to incidents involving domestic violence or weapons. And, you know, Chief Spruill put out a directive changing certain tactics to try to improve our opportunities to use better strategies and de-escalation opportunities when responding to these types of incidents. We also pushed out additional training on the suicide by cop phenomenon and tried to give our officers additional education on the best practices for responding to these types of cases when it becomes aware to the officers that they're dealing with somebody who may intend to commit suicide by cop. We also, we also pushed out the integrating communications assessment and tactics training. And that is a critical training in terms of de-escalation when you're dealing with individuals who are carrying either bladed weapons or blunt objects. It doesn't necessarily apply as much to an individual armed with a gun. But this was critical training for us to bring in additional skills for our officers to attempt to de-escalate, to contain incidents. And this is actually something that was in the works prior to these incidents. But the timeline was pushed up further because we knew we needed to respond after the series of shootings in 2019. And then we've worked hard to expand our behavioral health co-responder units. You know, we're very proud of this group. You know, where we're pairing up highly-trained officers trained in crisis intervention with licensed clinical social workers. And the teams are moving out to incidents where we know we're dealing with mental health in particular to try to bring additional resources and strategies to safely resolve those situations without the use of force. And, you know, we're really excited about these. We are currently, a lot of agencies across the state and the nation are reaching out to us for this model and how we're doing it. And we hope to expand this further in the future. Additionally, we have other obligations that we see toward risk mitigation. And this is really internal looking. We want to make sure that we're taking care of our officers in the aftermath of a shooting incident or lethal force incident. And we recognize that the stress, the anxiety that may be caused. may be caused by this incident can result in their own mental health crisis. And so we provide our officers with peer-led, critical incident stress debriefs, where they have opportunities through the Georgia Department of Public Safety to be debriefed on what they're feeling and the stresses they're going through. We require each officer to be cleared by a police psychologist before they're allowed to return to full duty. And then we also have, we have particular resources in place internally for ongoing support and monitoring of officers to make sure that we're taking care of their health and wellness, because an officer's been through a situation like this, has been permanently impacted, but we want to make sure that we are sending officers out who are safe. And we don't want an officer to be impacted to a degree that it affects their ability to do the job, and that it impacts how safely they carry out their job in the future. And so we're very aware of that as well, and we have several things in place to try to mitigate the potential that an incident may negatively impact a future incident that officer is involved in. So that covers the 2019, just a brief overview of those incidents, without getting into all the details of each particular case, which we don't have time to do. So I'd like to move on to the May 31st protest response. Our department's stance, again, is to facilitate the First Amendment, and we have a long history of doing that. Athens is a very vocal community, and we recognize that, and we absolutely respect that, and that's part of our duty and obligation to protect that right to assemble. But we do have to balance that with our duty to protect life and property and to preserve order within the community, and that's a really tough balance. And May 31st did really test that balance, you know, in the wake of the killing of George Floyd and the unrest that unraveled across the country in the days leading up to May 31st. So as an overview of that incident, the day began initially with peaceful demonstrations, and the department facilitated that by providing a safe passage of travel for people who chose to occupy the streets, cutting off vehicles so that they could walk the streets safely without fear of being struck by a car. However, information and intelligence gathered both before May 31st and then during May 31st supported certain real-time observations that we had on the ground, both through covert and overt sources, that gave us a credible threat to the public safety at that time. And again, we have to think about the totality of the circumstances for that moment. Based on that, an emergency declaration was enacted, and with a curfew. And that curfew was for 9:00 PM that particular night. And based on that, the department began to put out warnings and offer time for people to leave the area and comply with that emergency declaration and the curfew that was put in place. That began about 9:00 PM, and it wasn't until approximately midnight before the department decided that it was time and needed to actually take action and begin to disperse the crowd. And so there were approximately three hours of time where we did attempt to communicate, attempt to get people to disperse and leave the area. And the information we had at the time very clearly suggests the crowd was fully aware of the curfew, and fully aware that the Police Department was going to take action if people didn't disperse from the unlawful assembly at that time. Also, so in review of that incident, our professional standards conducted an internal administrative investigation. Again, that's different from a criminal investigation. That's administrative, where we look at our policies, our practices, our training. And though, at the time, our, the actions of our individual officers in terms of how force was applied, meaning the tear gas that was dispersed, the kinetic energy weapons or the baton rounds that were fired, those were within our policy limits at that time. And, but what we also recognized is that we lacked a civil disturbance team response capacity. As part of that investigation, it became pretty evident that we needed to build that out some, because we were relying on outside sources at the time, and we didn't have the training, the equipment, or the resources to respond safely in the event of civil unrest and any kind of mass scale. Additionally, we did find some other operational areas for improvement, and we'll get into those in just a moment. Our department did do its best to be transparent to the community. We answered questions during a press conference. We've responded to additional inquiries since that time and answered individual questions of the community. We made video of the event available and released it to the public, as well as the full internal investigative report was made available to the public. And so all that, you know, all of that is out there and available, and so we've tried to be as transparent as we could about that incident. Now, when it comes to improving our response in the future, if there's ever a situation similar, we've recognized that we had some shortcomings and some areas that we needed to improve when we looked back at how that situation unfolded, the response of the department. The first thing is that we knew we needed to train officers on civil unrest and to provide a more robust training to them so they were better equipped to appropriately, safely, and effectively respond to incidents of civil unrest. We also recognize, and we're working on strengthening some of our internal control and accountability, and that really goes hand-in-hand with the expansion of our training, expansion of a mobile field force, so that we're not relying on external agencies and sources to handle an incident of civil unrest, because we can regulate the actions of our employees more tightly than we can, for example, the State Patrol, if they come in and assist us and provide some of their mobile field force, or the Georgia National Guard. We have a less ability to control and regulate them, and we have less accountability to them. Our officers are more accountable to the department and the community. We've also implemented a more robust policy. We recognize very clearly that our policy was outdated in terms of civil unrest, and so we have implemented a more robust and expansive policy that sets clearer guidelines and expectations for the department in responding to civil unrest. And then finally, we've been working to diversify some of our options and resources, and really we focus that on improving our communication strategies and our de-escalation strategies. And so we're looking at particular equipment, tactics, other training, other resources for how we can improve our communication, improve our de-escalation. Some of that comes with policy, providing more accountability for establishing appropriate liaisons, and ongoing liaisons and transitions of liaisons with group leaders, as those things can remain fluid, and making sure that those lines of communication are open and clear. And so we've set, we've set our eyes on certain ways that we can improve primarily communication and de-escalation. And finally, kind of stepping out from the protest events, I want to kind of take a step back and talk about use of force again, and generally our department. In closing, again, the vast majority of our work is not related to force at all, and we do a lot of other things in the community that we really want to underscore and emphasize. It doesn't take away from the critical nature of those moments where force has to be used when our officers are responding to the actions of an individual. But they're very rare, but despite how rare they are, you can see how many hours, nearly 10,000 hours of training went into de-escalation and use of force last year. So we're putting a lot of time and effort behind the scenes into doing it safely, even though it's a very small part of what we do, but it's a critical part of what we do. And lastly, we're always looking for new opportunities, and new opportunities and different ways to train, to learn, to work with the community. And what we're really hoping to do moving forward, there's some grant opportunities out there to fund some additional training related to de-escalation and use of force, is to look for some of that, you know, some of that funding available from the state to focus on three key aspects of use of force, and prevention is the first, and preventing it from occurring in the first place, in those moments where it's absolutely necessary and it is applied, making sure that it's done safely and effectively to minimize the level of force and the injuries sustained from that incident. And then, in the wake of force events, ensuring restoration and making sure that we are retaining a good relationship with our community, we're staying transparent and accountable, and that we're continuing to work with the community even after a critical incident of force. So with that, I'll close out and open up for opportunities, open for questions, and I'll stop sharing my screen as well. So thank you all again for the opportunity to speak to you. I do appreciate it, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thanks, Captain Daniel. I appreciate that overview and kind of stepping through some of these opportunities that have already been taken and those in front of us. I see Commissioner Link's looking forward, and then Commissioner Dentson and Hul.
Yeah, thank you all for that presentation. I found it really informative. I have a couple questions. That point one four percent figure that you highlighted earlier in the presentation, you know, stating how often force is used in ACCPD, I'm wondering how that compares with other communities, either other communities of similar size, similar demographics within the region, peer communities within our state? I'd be interested in seeing some of those numbers. And, oh, I have also, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the police psychologist. Is this a full-time position, and is this person only called in in response? Or is this, and do officers have ongoing availability for, to speak with this person? Or are there requirements?
So it's not a full-time, we don't have a full-time in-house police psychologist. We do contract out that service to a very reputable individual, has been doing this for years, as well-known across the state and the nation. And yes, so that person is called in in the wake of these incidents and other incidents. We use, we use the police psychologist for other cases where we have reasonable concern for an officer's mental well-being. So it's not just limited to these incidents. However, internally, we do have officers who are trained from, you know, the Georgia Department of Public Safety and the Peer Support Unit that they have. We have peer-trained officers that we routinely use during critical incidents to provide that additional support for officers from a peer perspective. And then, you know, like I said earlier, we do call in the state Peer Support Group as well when we need to. And then also, we highly encourage our officers on a routine basis to use the county's EAP. We extremely, we value that program, and we routinely remind them of that when it's not something that it's required to do. On occasion, you know, it may be determined that we have to send them, but we're constantly making that resource available to them and reminding them of that one as well. So we're looking at a lot of different avenues to make sure that we're taking care of the mental health and well-being of our officers.
Let me also, if I can, let me also add that any officer, when we're hiring new officers, are required to go through an evaluation as part of their background check. So we do a thorough background check or thorough psychological evaluation of that person, see if there's any signs or indications there that we have a problem with anger management or, you know, any other, in any other area that may make them not suitable to be a police officer. And so we do weed some people out in that initial psychological evaluation process.
Thank you. I mean, I would be interested in, you know, having a deeper conversation about increasing those services, maybe even making regular visits required for officers. You know, it's an extremely stressful job, and I know that, you know, divorce and domestic violence and things like that are higher, and suicides are higher among police officers. So I'd like to, you know, look into making those resources as available and encouraged as possible, you know, while we also increase those resources for our general community.
I think that's a great idea, and in fact, what I've seen in some other jurisdictions is they do what's called an annual checkup. So, so once a year, whether the officers are involved in a traumatic incident or not, they, you know, will sit down with psychiatrists and, you know, go over things. One thing is, is that it's quite routine for us to do what's called critical incident stress debriefing. So seeing a 13-year-old child that is killed and mangled in a automobile accident, or seeing some of the, you know, someone who's shot or had suicide, those are not things that normal people should have to look at. And so we want to make sure that we get our officers in front of somebody to talk to, to talk about it, and make sure we're looking at well-being.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, first just want to thank, thank you, Captain Daniel and Chief Spruell for being here with us and preparing this. And yeah, I mean, I just want to talk really bluntly about, you know, that it's important for all of us to know, and I try to make sure that, you know, I'm understanding that that some of these discussions make officers feel underappreciated or overly criticized due to the extremely difficult job and positions that we put them in. And first just want to, you know, make sure noticing that and taking account of that. And I'm really hoping that these discussions are able for us as the elected officials and y'all as leadership and with our police force to create, to create a space and a dialogue where we can all to, you know, commit to creating processes and a department and practices that are optimally effective for Athens Clark County and that are really beating the needs and challenges of the residents here. And, you know, I think a lot of that, to me, is tied up in even this use of force discussion about the other factors and needs that Athens Clark County Government and its leaders are, have to address, whether that come to mental health response, physical health response, housing, all these other things. And, you know, this has all been, of course, tied up in discussions of quote-unquote defund the police and everything, and, you know, having, I think, really kind of some extremes on the right and left kind of dictating that discussion. But there was, there was something that Captain Daniel, that you said, going, leading into the discussion on, the presentation on the, on the six shootings in 2019, the unfortunate shootings, where you said, there's something that has led that person to that moment in time. And I think that is really important for us in this discussion, that the best way that oftentimes we can be, not having to have these use-of-force situations come up and having our police officers put in these situations that are just amazingly difficult and happening so quickly, is to make sure that we're addressing those needs, those things that led that person to that moment in time. And oftentimes, that is, you know, dealing with mental health crises, making sure that people have their basic needs addressed, making sure they have housing and food, and all these different things that are much more larger challenges than what the police force should be having to deal with, yet when those things aren't addressed, the person that is having to deal with that situation at the end there is, is police officers. And oftentimes, we've created situations where force is used because there's not a lot of other options. And so I'm really hoping that this can be a part of a larger discussion, which I think it is, this is the second time we've met recently, that, that starts talking about those broader goals, and hopefully we can all talk in a way that's not on those political extremes and/or rights, and kind of come to a place with respect where we are creating that space and that dialogue, where we're just making sure that we are addressing those overall needs and challenges that our residents have. And it's obvious that the, to me, that the Police Department is part of that response, but that the police should not be the ultimate response to so many of those things. So I have a few other specific questions that maybe I get into at the end there, but after that, just like really appreciate y'all's time and getting into this conversation.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if I might, I appreciate that, Commissioner Denson. And as a matter of fact, on the heels of discussion tonight, I, I'd like for us to return at the March the ninth work session and talk about the police's, well, the department's approach to policing in general. You know, this is about the use of force tonight. And, and share with you some of the chief's talks about the next iteration of mental health, the teams that we, you've already funded and how to expand those in the context of the cahoots discussion that y'all have started. The mayor has been very consistent with me about that as well. So to your point, Commissioner Denson, if we can come back on March the ninth, we want to talk more about that broadly, about how to deal with those situations before they get to the police department and, and how we can use training and additional professionals to help mitigate some of those where possible. So.
Let me just add, you know, homelessness is not a crime. It's a life condition. Mental illness and substance abuse are not crimes. They are illnesses. But if we, if we don't dedicate the resources and check those conditions, ultimately, all of those people end up interacting, coming into contact with the police. So getting involved in things like the cahoots program where we're proactive about figuring out what the needs of the community is and working with social workers or mental health clinicians or substance abuse counselors is where we want to go. We're, we're in total agreement.
Tim, did you want to follow up now or just wait after some more discussion?
I'll just wait for a little more discussion, yeah.
Okay, thanks. And, and, and I appreciate your comments, Tim, and then Blaine and Chief's follow-up. I mean, I think we all recognize, you know, what we want are those early diversionary opportunities that keep people from even the barest underlying circumstance that could eventually lead to any use of force or any other negative outcome. So, you know, the earlier in the game we can interact with the citizenry in a positive way, the less likely any negative outcome, even negative outcomes that don't involve use of force, but might end up somebody in the emergency room or, or on Lexington Highway. So, and Jesse.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really glad the conversation has arrived at this point already. I really appreciate the remarks from my colleagues, Manager Williams and Chief Spruell. I think a lot of those really hit the nail on the head. I've been kind of scribbling some notes of what I thought I might try to touch upon. It really just echoes a lot of that. But the, the suicide by cop portion of the presentation, you know, that's a term that always really sticks out to me. And I think it's important, I, I want to be clear that those situations, the discussions around the problems there is not an indicator of misconduct by officers or the department. It's an indicator of our failure as a community to have adequate resources for healthcare and violence prevention and to some degree crisis response. But I, I want to be clear that I'm coming from the perspective of not wanting to dig into the, the decision someone has made on the fly in that context as much as the fact that that context is the situation those individuals have found themselves in the first place. And, you know, so with that in mind, I guess, since y'all kind of really already hit along, along the lines of a lot of the, the general direction I'd like to go in, I'm really encouraged by the idea that we're going to have a, a work session in March to dig in further, especially with those crisis intervention response units, the, the Jerry Neesmith Behavioral Health Corresponder Units. I get, we got to settle on a, on whatever name we want to use for those. I, I am curious, is, do you think it's best to save my questions about those for that work session, Manager Williams? Or is it worth it to, to, because about half my questions were about those, actually?
Well, Commissioner Hull, if, yes, because we do want to devote some time and really dig into that. Obviously, if you want to share some thoughts that, that will help us in, you know, crafting that presentation, things that you want to hear about. But I do want to make sure that we get to the root of your questions and concerns on use of force. And I know all of this stuff is interrelated. So respectfully, whatever you want to, wherever you want to take us, but we do want to come back and talk about that in depth.
Totally. Well, I guess I'll just share in brief that I'm really glad that we have a third coming online, but I'd really like to have time in that work session to dig into what kind of coverage that provides us, because that obviously doesn't even give us enough to have 24/7, never mind if there's two calls at once. And then also some information around when those units are called, like what, what circumstances lead to a, a unit being called out versus not. And I guess where that dovetails with the use of force discussion is, were any of those units dispatched in those officer-involved shootings in 2019? Were, were there those units on site for any of those six incidents?
Well, in fact, for the incidents, the units were not actually working at that time. So that speaks to the coverage question you mentioned, which, that's a fantastic question. Two of those incidents, which have been the July 1st incident and then the October 14th incident, we did have our crisis response units working that day. However, based on the nature of the call initially, it wasn't necessarily clear that it was something they would respond to right away. And then those two particular incidents unfolded so quickly, one within two minutes of the officers or three minutes of the officers arriving. They might not have had time to practically get there in that moment. But that's actually something that we have been looking into is how do we improve our coverage? How do we better assess from the, the call, the onset of the call to 911? Is this something that we need to go ahead and start dispatching a crisis response unit to? And we're looking into how we can improve our pre-assessment before officers arrive on scene to better determine, you know, when we're dealing clearly with a crisis intervention moment. But those are issues we're looking into. So yeah, I definitely appreciate that question. It's a very good, very good question and it's something that we, you know, we want to follow up more on.
Thank you. And would you mind elaborating on the changes for, you know, I know, I, I've heard about changes in the protocols for responding to these incidents and not having a single officer on scene. But could you just maybe take a minute or two to kind of elaborate on what some of those changes are for responding to domestic violence or weapons incidents?
Yes, good question. So specifically, the, the first and foremost is when time and circumstances permit, officers are expected to stage so that one officer doesn't go in by him or herself. So they will stage at a safe location close to the incident itself, meet at least two officers and then develop additional strategies before going in. And so there's a, it's almost like a momentary pause before they step into the scene. And then they're trying to work out, okay, what, what additional resources might we need? And, and they can begin calling in those extra resources. That's really the first and foremost is the, the staging, kind of what we would call a tactical pause to think, develop a strategy and then, and then move forward with that strategy. Supervisors have a stronger responsibility to respond to those types of calls now when they're available to do so. That's one of the other changes. And Chief, if I'm missing something, you know, please feel free. And also Chief, just real quick, your volume's a little low on your microphone.
Yeah, can you all hear me better now or am I still low? Okay, so the other piece to this is, is that obviously if active violence is being carried out against an individual, we're not going to stage. We're going directly in. If active violence is not taking place, then we stage. They are going to talk tactics, but also look for a less lethal option in addition to a lethal option. So in a case where you have one officer going in by himself, if he shows up and the person has a, a knife, he's by himself and he doesn't have the time and opportunity to deploy less lethal force. So this staging gives, you know, other officers the opportunity to say, you handle less lethal and I will handle, you know, the lethal if it comes down to, comes down to that.
May I just ask one more follow-up? And then I, I have some other questions about totally different categories, but I'd rather give my colleagues time to chime in before I just keep going. But I am curious with this less lethal use of force. You know, we talked a lot about tasers lately. And I'm just curious if y'all could elaborate with those six incidents on which ones involved use of a taser before firearm and when not, why not? I, I know the machete incident was spoken about the last time we were talking with y'all and that person had an overcoat, so it would have made it an ineffective tool. But I'm curious of some of the other ones, especially there's that incident in October of 2019 with the woman who's brandishing a knife that has kind of stuck out in my mind.
Sure. And so when you, an officer responds and he's by, he or she is, is by themselves at the scene, the, and they're not going to take out a, a, a taser in that kind of situation. Because the, the, if they miss, if one of the parts doesn't attach or if it's not effective on that person, then the consequences are that they are likely to be stabbed or ser, or seriously injured. So in that case, because he was there by himself, it would not have been an appropriate choice for him to go to a taser. That's why we're saying stage outside the area, get another unit there. And then in the future, my hope is, is that that person can back off and they would feel comfortable trying to utilize the taser as a less lethal option before going directly to deadly force. In another case that occurred on Macon Highway, where an individual named Mr. Han charged at the officer, our, one, one, one of our officers actually took it, he was in training and his, his, his field training officer told him, go to less lethal. And he was transitioning to a taser. He actually took the taser out and was trying to get it on target when Mr. Han charged at the officer, at the other officer wielding the knife. And that's when the other officer shot him. That, he, he got back up off the ground after he was shot. And because he had left the, the knife on the ground, the officer transitioned to his taser and was going to try to taser him again. And you actually can see in the video, the officer trying to get on track. But again, Mr. Han charged after the other officer and got over behind him and tried to take his gun out of his holster. So there was attempts there for officers to try to use their taser in those cases. In the Swinford case, which was the one that occurred on March the 8th, this person had what appeared to be a gun. And so when a person has a gun, you're not going to get close enough to them to use a taser. So it was not really an option in that case. The case that occurred on April 20th was, it came in as a peeping tom case. That was, or stalking case. And so the officers were going over, they're going to knock on the door, ask the guy what he's up to, say, leave the lady alone, and had no idea that it was going to evolve to what it evolved to. When they went to the door, the guy came to the door with a shotgun and pointed the shotgun at the officers. So again, a taser, time and circumstances would not have allowed a taser to be introduced in that case. The same thing with the Salazar case where the officer was behind them, had no idea. He had a machete, he was just trying to get him stopped to find out why he was stalking or peeping tom with the woman. And he brought a machete out and almost chopped the officer in the face. Again, not time and, and time and circumstances did not allow for that. And then of course, the non-zow case, the, it, it was a noise complaint. And officers went and tried to stop the individual and he went over behind a dumpster and pulled a gun out and shot at the officers. So when he's shooting at the officers, they're not going to go for a taser. They're going to return deadly force. So, you know, it's unfortunate, tragic, but in none of those cases, the, in, in two of the cases, we tried to use tasers, but it just didn't work out. And in the other cases, there just wasn't time and opportunity for the officers to use a taser.
Captain Daniel or Chief, you know, in one of the last few slides, you mentioned the forward mid-leaning desire to improve response, particularly around civil unrest. And I'd be interested in hearing, you know, what advancements you've made or anticipate making there, you know, whether it's de-escalation strategies or communication strategies or coverage of the overall scene or, or, or other incidents. And I've said, I think both of you, you know, in public and in private, that, you know, that direct engagement with individuals on the street is something that, you know, I've recognized is just a need when you have those. And obviously, we had a specific context, which was the aftermath of a formal protest, but we have some kind of similar challenges sometimes around parties or large group brouhahas or, or other incidents. So be interested in your response or opportunities for where we may go there.
So the, well, the first thing I mentioned earlier, you know, is the policy change. We have updated our policy and part of it speaks, Mr. Mayor, directly to those, your questions, you know, what we're doing different. The first thing is providing additional training to our officers on how to respond to those types of cases. So building out our mobile field force, providing them the equipment to safely contain and manage large crowds. The second would be changing some of our protocols and procedures for both before the event occurs, establishing an appropriate and a strong line of communication and dialogue with identified leaders of any groups that would be protesting. And then some specific, we've, we've highlighted some specific things that we want to address, you know, begin to engage them in, okay, understanding what their intentions are, explaining to them certain laws that would be applicable. Like go ahead and starting those conversations early. And then also putting into place better protocol for, for example, in, in the, though we had initiated those lines of communication on May 31st, part of the reason they broke down is some of the initial formalized leaders of those groups left and we failed to establish some, who the new leaders were that were kind of driving the group. And so we've, we've set some additional protocols in place to reestablish lines of communication during a fluid environment so that we don't lose it intermittently. And then we're also looking at some additional equipment to allow us to communicate more clearly from greater distances. And we're hoping to have some of that online pretty soon so that we don't have a situation where maybe some people heard what we were trying to communicate and others didn't. So that's been really our primary focus is the improvement of communication strategy and then particularly how we can use that to de-escalate the situation.
Let me, let me just add one thing. And, and I have heard the commission and the community loud and clear on this. And that is, is this, when we, in, in this instance, when this thing all unfolded, we had no civil disturbance response capability or capacity here ourselves. And when we asked the state, when, when we asked them for resources, we don't get to choose what they sent. And so, you know, we might call them and say, we need some assistance. And the next thing we know, we've got 50, you know, National Guard with, you know, trucks and tanks and what have you. And that just looks bad to the community. They're going, what is going on here? So we have increased our own, we, we had 50 people before the incident occurred. I had began trying to build out a civil disturbance unit because I saw that was an area that we were lacking in. Unfortunately, we didn't have the equipment for them and we didn't have them trained to the point. So, so we had to, through the first couple of incidents, rely very heavily on state resources. But now, I, I, I know we've got at least 50 and probably more by now that are trained and equipped to be able to handle an incident internally with our resources where we don't have to go to the state, you know, unless it gets out of control so quickly. And we would want to handle it internally before we bring in those other ones because as I've, you know, heard many times, it just, you know, it looks bad when we've got all those vehicles and things that look militarized that are coming in to the county.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I was curious, back in August of last year, Barrow County tried to stop somebody with a broken taillight and they pursued that person into Athens Clark County and struck Sergeant Paul Davison, one of our officers. How, how's he doing? How's he doing, first of all?
He's doing fine, he's back to regular duty.
Okay, good.
Yeah, he's back to regular duty, he's doing fine.
Okay, good.
It was, you know, if you saw the vehicle that he was in, prayerfully, he's lucky to be alive.
Right, right.
And he had some serious injuries, but worked with them, and he's back to full regular duty now, he's doing very well.
Okay, good. Well, I think we're fortunate in this circumstance, and it makes me ask the question, Chief, what is our policy for greenlighting high-speed pursuits within our county?
So Athens Clark County has one of the most restrictive emergency vehicle pursuit policies in this region, and we think it's necessary to have that, that restrictive of a policy, because we want to balance the need to apprehend fleeing suspects against the danger that those kind of inherent dangers that those kind of pursuits are going to pose to our community. So unless it's a felony involving the threat to life, or a gun, or some high-level offense, we don't allow pursuits.
So what happened here? Because this guy had a busted taillight.
Yeah, well, what happens is, is we, we control our officers, but you got to remember, sheriffs are state officers, so they can pursue anywhere in the state, we don't control them. Now typically, what would happen is me or one of my commanders would get on the air, and if it doesn't meet our criteria, we would tell them, terminate the pursuit. But this thing happened so quickly that he, we really didn't even have the opportunity to make that happen, but.
You're saying, you're saying even still, you don't have the authority?
No, but, but I, but I want to be on record, as often as I can, saying, terminate the pursuit, it doesn't meet my criteria, because basically what I'm telling them is, I'm going to show up in court and testify against you that this is reckless and dangerous, and I ask you not to do it, and you did it anyway. Now, you know, some departments are going to keep on doing what they do, they, before even a taillight out, they'll pursue until the tires fall off. Other departments would, you know, adhere those warnings and comply with what we ask them to do.
Okay, thank you, Chief. And then, you know, finally, I, I think it was interesting, sort of, the juxtaposition between the, the two events that occurred this past summer. The one on May 31st, and I guess the one the week, you know, exactly one week after. And one of the distinguishing characteristics was that the one a week after had the presence of some of the civilian authority of this government throughout the evening. I know Manager Williams was there throughout the evening, I know I was there the entire time, and I know Tim Denson was there for much of the evening. And it turned out okay. I know that Governor Kemp brought a lot of military hardware on the UGA campus and came into the command center and took pictures and sent them to the newspaper. But that was very much a peaceful resolution. And so I, I guess I just wanted to highlight that for my colleagues and for staff to say, you know, that we, we have the capability to, ourselves as office holders, to cooperate and serve and work alongside our police officers. And I think that that event that occurred one week after the one we've been talking about tonight that resulted in tear gas was actually very peaceful, and was, I think, a collaborative resolution, and is no, is, you know, I'm having to bring it up, we're not even talking about it anymore. So.
I, I think that's a point very well taken. What I will tell you, and some of what was going on on the May 31st incident, people may not have known about, but I was in very close discussions with both the mayor and with Assistant Manager London, right up until the point where, you know, we were, made the decision that we were going to have to move the crowd and some factors that played in to make why that decision had to be made at that time. But listen, you know, we want to avoid using force whenever possible.
Well, and one other characteristic, Chief, I recollect, the event on May 31st featured those far-right extremist accelerationist Boogaloo Boys, and I remember I myself felt unsettled when the six or seven of those individuals with long rifles and semi-automatic weapons showed up to that protest. They weren't present a week later, but I remember, you know, I texted the mayor and texted him a picture of those individuals, and I was concerned about the security of the situation when, when the Boogaloo Boys showed up, so.
Yeah, and, and, and so, you know, it's, we don't want to Monday morning quarterback ourselves, but we, it's easy to say, well, they were here, they weren't planning on doing anything, but we don't know what their intent was. Some of the intelligence we had suggested otherwise, and I know even since then, regionally and nationally, they've been mentioned in some acts of violence, and, and, and so we, we.
I think some of them, some of them stormed the Capitol, Chief.
Right, and so, and so, you know, that's, Captain Daniels talked about this delicate balance that we have to play between making sure that we allow people to exercise their First Amendment right, free assembly, but also protecting our infrastructure, property, and the lives and safety of other protesters who are there. And so that, but I think, I think.
Well, and I, I think, Chief, that, you know, if I was going to Monday morning quarterback it, you know, I, I sometimes have, have regretted the fact that I went home that night. I mean, I, I felt unsettled, I left. I know that there were no commissioners that were there during, during this event. There were no clear leaders really of the community that were present. So that was another distinguishing characteristics. None of us were there that night, the tear gas, you know, right there at College Square. Some of us were there the next week. But the final thing I wanted to ask, Chief, one thing that really concerns me about Georgia, our nation in general, but I, I read the other day that almost a million background checks were performed in Georgia last year for gun purchases, and, you know, I just, I think probably the hardest part of y'all's job is just going out there and not knowing who has a firearm, who has a gun. And I know even today, we had this unfortunate episode, you know, thinking that this individual had a gun because he had his, his hand hid under his shirt, he was saying he had a gun. You know, guns are everywhere. Well, what, I know there was a shooting of, maybe last year or so, there was a gun buyback program that was organized. How are those gun buyback programs organized and collaborated with, with the police?
Yeah, that was actually something that was done through a private citizen who did that gun buyback. Quite frankly, I'd love to do some additional ones. I think, I, I, don't quote me on the numbers, but I think he got 40-plus firearms that were turned in.
So y'all can, y'all can help collaborate that? Somebody could just call you up and say, hey, I've got $5,000, $10,000, and y'all can kind of just help make that happen?
Absolutely, and that's what happened in that case. But the other thing I'd like to point out here is just doing more with responsible gun ownership. There's a group called Moms Demand Action. The mayor met with us and them on the steps of City Hall to talk about irresponsible action that's leading to these guns getting into the hands of the wrong people. I couldn't tell you the number of times where people leave guns in their cars, many times they don't even lock the door, and people steal those guns, and then later on, those guns are used to commit violent acts. And so Moms and Action is a group that is advocating for tougher rules around people who are careless with guns, and that result, that end up getting into the hands of the wrong people.
Yeah, I know there's a story yesterday, I think a toddler pulled a loaded pistol out of a woman's purse and shot her. I mean, this, it just happens all the time, so. Thank you, Chief, that's the end of my inquiry.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Commissioner. Circling to Allison, then back to Jesse.
I just wanted to add that, that gentleman that did the buyback, it was after a family member had gotten shot. Remember that, Chief Sproul?
Yeah, that was a, that was one of the most tragic situations that I've seen in a long, long time. Young lady named Ariel Callaway, who was a number of months pregnant, was out in front of her house with her young child, I think the other child was like three or four years old, and gunfire broke out. And she got hit trying to get her other son out of harm's way. And at that location, we recovered 80-plus rounds, where people had just been shooting. And we went back and we locked a lot of people up. I think you are familiar with the Operation Benchwarmer, where we work with the federal authorities to make a number of arrests and charge some folks with gang charges and with gun charges there. So very tragic, and that young lady's name was Ariel Callaway, and both her and her unborn child did not survive that incident.
That's right. And then, and so the, the guns that you got were different from the family member who did the buyback?
Okay, so that night, we did several search warrants, and we recovered, and the night of the shooting, we did search warrants, and we were able to recover some of the guns, and we made charges against a number of people who were involved in that shooting. Then separate from that, a guy named Brian Gant, who is the relative of the decedent, he worked with UGA and got some funding and was able to do a, do a buyback, and we were, I think we got either 30 or 40 weapons that were turned in, sold back to us.
That, I appreciate those details being shared, it's really important, and I appreciate your outreach to me during that, since that was in my district.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I haven't heard from Commissioner Myers yet, and then I'll circle back to Commissioner Hul.
Hi, hey, Captain Daniel and Chief Sproul, thanks for all of this. I'm going to back out, back to your presentation a little bit. I just got to, what, what, actually, I got to say to y'all that I think that it's wonderful that we're here talking, and I started off thinking that I was regretting to some degree that we weren't all in person, because I think this kind of relationship building between the commission, the mayor, and the police department is really important. You know, because of the national conversation, how it comes down to us locally here as well. So I'm really glad that we're having this conversation. I want to actually really commend you on the transparency. While you were talking about what you had on the website, I was looking there, and I was just like, wow, that you have your every policy up there. That's not something that's always that easy to find. And then just going into some of the other materials, Commissioner Hul and I have been just engrossing ourselves as new commissioners in all these materials, and I, and I feel like I could, you know, I could spend a week just looking at materials to better understand some of you, what you're doing here. And I, and I actually have like two questions on that. I pulled up that report on the annual use of force, and I was interested to see that you all make reference to the Citizens Police Advisory Board, and I know that that's gotten some, like, and, and using that Citizens Advisory Board in some of your use of force training, or the de-escalation training and such, that makes me feel like you all are fine with having this Citizens Police Advisory Board, despite what some of the rhetoric we're hearing from the public. Is, am I correct in, in that interpretation here?
Well, what I will say today is the same thing that I've said to the mayor and to the manager on day one. I think a Citizens Advisory Committee is an excellent idea, because it will increase communication, increase understanding, increase dialogue, and help us explain our actions in the very difficult job that officers do. That being said, it's got to be a fair and impartial advisory board. It can't be a board that's made up of all people who are prior felons, who have an agenda coming in and want to, to take power and run the police department. That's not what it's about, it's about communication, dialogue, and understanding. And so as long as we, it's a fair and impartial board that is focused on communication, understanding, dialogue, and working together to make the department and our community better, then I am in favor of that. But some of the things that have come out of that board, and I, I really don't want to get real deep into that tonight, what I will say is, I'm very concerned about what appears to be ulterior motives coming out of the Developmental Task Force, where I heard things that are suggestive, suggestive of defunding the police, where they are not interested in accepting input and giving voice to the police department, where anyone who has a favorable impression of the police department is basically welcome and driven away. If that's the kind of environment that we're trying to create, I absolutely don't, I can't support that and wouldn't want to be involved in that. If we're creating something that's fair and impartial, and that's working to develop something that is positive and working together to improve, then I'm, I'm very much in favor of that.
That's, that's helpful. It sounds like that fair and impartial board is important for you. So, and, and the other thing I was thinking, you know, when you started off the presentation with that number of just 0.14% of incidents use fours, I, I started thinking about that and how there's a perception problem for people in the community as well, that is really, like, I don't have it, because I live, I'm a white, you know, upper-middle-aged woman, and I don't have negative associations with the police, and I've had very few. But still, actually, I get a little nervous when that police, you know, when that, when that siren goes off behind me. And I was, then I pulled up something on the board about the, from the wellness group that was about community safety and perceptions of the public. And so I'm sure that, it, it makes me see, I see stuff on here, that you all are aware that it's just not the reality of your use of force, but the perception of that use of force, which may come from things locally or nationally as well. And I'm wondering how you deal with that yourselves, or just discuss that in terms of getting that better, I mean, you're doing a good job with us tonight, talking with us, but getting that, that communication out. I, I just talked to one of the neighborhood leaders, who is a, probably a 35-year-old African-American woman who said, and I said, police, and she said, well, I'm not calling the police, because if it were, like, if I were in a domestic abuse situation, I think I mentioned this before, I'd be afraid to call the police because they might shoot the guy. And, and I'm not saying that's going to happen, but that was her, you know, perception coming out. So I'm just wondering, I don't know, what you have to say in terms of that, and, and dealing with those perceptions, as well as perhaps some real things as well?
Well, and I think that's why it's critically important for us to continue to be involved in community outreach, to take advantage of opportunities for the police department to be singing in positive non-enforcement activities out in our community. So folks can know that we are friends, that we are there to the benefit of the community, not, we don't want the only time that they see us is when we're there, when we're arresting and enforcing and taking somebody to jail. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is, you know, part of the problem is our problem. We are not doing as good a job talking about some of the great things that we do, and sharing that information with the community. For example, about two weeks ago, I got a picture of Robbie Cochran, he's, he's our behavioral health, one of our offices that's assigned to the Ni Smith Behavioral Health Group, and he was up probably 30 feet in the air on a ladder, on a fire truck ladder, talking to a woman who was getting ready to jump off the side of the building. And he was able to talk her down and get her down off of the building. The community doesn't see that often, or doesn't know that, unless we get it out to the community and talk about some of the good stuff that we're doing. We had another officer who happened to go into a store where a person had struck a woman in the nose and broke, broke her nose, and then cut another woman with a box cutter, and was still standing there with the box cutter, blood all over him, and an officer showed up. And there was a very tense, five-minute standoff right there, and the officer was able to defuse the situation, talk him down, and take him into custody without using force or without deadly force. So those kinds of incidents, folks don't, don't see that, or don't know that we're doing that, and so we began a campaign to try to do a better job about talking about some of the good stuff that our offices are doing. We, we, you know, we, we had a case where we arrested a person and charged them with vehicular homicide and feet aside, where he was intoxicated and got into an automobile accident and killed not only the woman that was in the car with him, but her unborn child. So that investigation was a lengthy investigation, and we charged them, and so we are trying to get that kind of information out to the public, that we're doing good stuff, or the kind of work that we are doing, because we do need to protect our community. I mean, there's violence in our community, and we want to be in a position to make sure we're protecting our community. I hope. And we wanna be in a position to make sure we're protecting our community. I hope that answers the question.
And if I might too, I'd like to add to this because I've thought long and deep about this as, as no doubt you all have. And there are things that are happening across the country that are not okay. Uh, there are departments who may not have gone through the years of training or thoughtfulness. Uh, that this department has, and let's be clear, we can always improve. But I think a lot of people's righteous anger at things that have happened elsewhere may have fallen on our department as well. And all I do is, you know, I, it, it's up to anybody to make up their own mind, but I'd ask them to look a little further. Like watching tonight or going to the transparency page, asking questions before passing judgment. Because um I'm convinced that this department, and this goes back years before with Chief Lumpkin and continuing with Chief Spurle's leadership and all the. The men and women that serve in there, there is a commitment to this community. As a department, and I think there's a good story to tell and we're glad to be here tonight to help share some of this and answer questions.
Others. Uh, Commissioner Hul and then back to Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I wanted to bring us back to the uh summer protests. Um. And kind of following up on Commissioner Edwards, I think it's a point well taken regarding the presence of. Elected officials and like non-ACC police department staff at those events. I wasn't a commissioner at the time, but I was present at both the thirty, May thirty first and June sixth and. Was really grateful to have seen Commissioner Myers at, at least the, the sixth. She wasn't a commissioner then yet either. And Mayor Gerst and Commissioners Denson, Edwards and Parker at both. I thought that was powerful. Um. I also think it's important though that we don't mischaracterize the events of May thirty first as having been. Driven by or led by or in any way defined by the Boogaloo Boys. Uh, nor any of the protesters on May thirty first having been violent. Uh, and I think it's important to recognize the leadership of, that, that leadership comes in many forms. It's not just. From the selected body and that our residents have historically, including in the summer of twenty twenty, done an excellent job of taking care of each other. And staging large demonstrations that have not erupted in violence nor in property destruction. Um, and it's with that in mind, I have kind of a question about each of those protests. So the. And also as an aside, can, can we get a copy of, or could you point me to where in that transparency page we can see the updated. Policies and directives that have been established since? Is that something we could be emailed, Manager Williams?
Sure, Chief, Captain Daniel, um. Isolated or?
If I may add, I, I guess my question, are you referring to the specific policy on uh. Uh, demonstrations and civil disorder?
Yeah, I, I should have asked my other questions first, but the, this, this is just, you had mentioned that there were some updated. Policies you're putting in place for how to respond to incidents of civil unrest. I'm just curious where we can find those.
Yes, uh, good question. Um, we could send them to you directly, but if you do look at that webpage and you've seen it before. If you scroll down to chapter seven on the right column, which is the new directives, police directives, you'll see seven point oh three annex five specifically demonstrations and.
Civil disorder, okay.
Yes, that'd be the policy you're referring to.
Let me just add one quick thing and I really appreciate Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Hugh. Spending time on their transparency website. Because there's so much information there that will help people understand what our rules and policies are. And then also be mindful that there's the opportunity there for them to submit information to say. I recommend this change or I recommend that change. And when they, when people submit those kinds of recommendations. We may have to come back and say, well, the law won't allow it, but we'll come back with some kind of a. I- i- if, if, if it's something that's doable, we'll do it, but if it's not, we'll come back with some kind of explanation and. Uh, dialogue um to help people understand what those policies are. So. I do appreciate folks spending time at that transparency website because it's got. A, a plethora of information that can be helpful in it, helping people understand the difficult job that we do and what our policies are.
Well, thanks, Chief, and I'm, I'm really grateful that we have a department that puts so much up like that. Um, that really does stand out. Um. But I guess my, my first of two questions, I have kind of one for each of the events. And for June sixth, I think what's really. Puzzling to me is why that was regarded as an event of civil unrest. It was a permanent event. It had a large presence of many well-known community leaders. The population downtown was not any larger than a big game day. And so I guess I'm curious why it was regarded that way. And also I, I'd love clarification on why we had such an elevated military presence and whether that was. The governor that did that or if it was also a local decision.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent question. And what I will tell you is, is that. In both incidents, we were looking at intelligence that was coming in. Uh, from federal, state and lo- other, other local law enforcement and intelligence agencies. We also were looking at um things that were occurring in other jurisdictions locally and regionally and nationally where. Where uh, uh, incidents that were starting off as peaceful protests. A few um agitators would get into that crowd and turn it into something else. Um, throwing Molotov cocktails, um, you know, damaging property or committing violence. And so we were monitoring and watching all of those things. And this, this is a delicate balance that we're trying to play here because. If we don't request the resources and have those resources in town and on standby. And then it does go south like it went in Atlanta and some of the other places, we don't have time. We won't have time to call in and say we need resources to come here. And so we had to make the requests in advance. We did make a request for some resources. But the resources that are sent to us are dictated by JIMA, Georgia Emergency Management. They look at the size, the scope, the intelligence that we have, and then they send us what they think uh we would need. And so uh with the college here, remember some of the resources that you may have seen. Were not our resources because the, remember the college was calling for resources also. So I know on the sixth, they had as many resources there at the college as we had. Here in Athens and, and in, and, and even later on add more. Uh, so there's a lot of factors that went into it, but the big thing is, is we. You know, we, we can't, we have to be proactive and get the resources we feel like we need. To deal with the situation if it gets out of control. And I know what that did for some people in the community is they looked at it and said. They're building this thing up and this is not what this is. And so I understand that. So now. We have began to build out our civil disturbance unit so we can have our own people. We can have them, uh, you know, in soft uniforms and telling unless. That the situation starts to escalate and we may not need to bring in those kind of resources. The idea. For, for our department is to get three quarters of all of our authorized sworn officers trained and able to. Respond to that so we don't have to use outside resources unless it's something that's just too big and of such a great magnitude. That we can't handle it.
Well, thanks, Chief, and yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful that it'll be very different moving forward because I, I can say, you know. Having been to hundreds of demonstrations around this country and in other countries, that was. The largest militarized presence I've ever seen. And I've also been at demonstrations that have been much larger. And so it was. Um. In many, I, I honestly, it was, it was a fairly disturbing response just from the presence, I think, you know, as a community member. And I, and I heard that from many of my fellow community members too. And so I'm glad that we're gonna have a different approach moving forward. Um. And I, I'd be curious to have a further discussion at some point when it seems relevant about. How we characterize things as civil disturbances and, you know, when we get that intelligence, like what, what scale of response. How, how we're justifying a, a response to that scale if we were in the future to need something beyond how the department is shifting.
And, and what I will say also is that we. A lot, some of the information that we had, we were able to share publicly, but there's. Uh, certain intelligence reports and information that comes in that's law enforcement sensitive. That we wouldn't be able to share with other people. So there's more, in any of these cases, there's more that we know. That we, we're not at liberty to share with the, the public. I know that doesn't make people feel comfortable. Um, but uh, you know, it's a, it's a very delicate balancing act and, you know, we've gotta do it. And, and at, at the end of the day, right from the start, I talked to the mayor and to the manager and said, listen. Looking back at that, we could have done better and we're committed to doing what we've gotta do to do better in going forward, that's, you know.
Well, so perhaps the answer to this question will be basically that, but I, I am curious about May thirty first. And what justified the use of tear gas at the time it was deployed. Um, in that, you know. Heard about the Boogaloo Boys, saw them there, there's a handful of guys, but they were gone hours before. The deployment of tear gas, um, at least as far as anyone on site could tell. And all the folks who were. Seated, you know, largely seated or standing in the area where the tear gas was deployed were not those, those armed individuals. And I also heard there's, you know, there's, the original report mentioned bricks and tents, but there weren't bricks and tents. And so I'm just. Curious, you know, at the time, if, if you could clarify for me and others. Why the decision to use tear gas seemed necessary.
You know, so we, we, we've released the full report. If you haven't read that report, I would encourage you to go and read that report. Uh, and uh, wh- what you will see is, is that when we first moved in. We had made the decision that it was time to move the crowd. Um, at that point, the only folks that we had that were equipped and trained to deal with. Um, that level of a protest were our, and I didn't wanna use state or use the military. Uh, the, the, the National Guard. So we used our SRT team. And I didn't want uh folks to go in using batons and trying to, you know. Physically push and, and hit people to arrest them or move them out of the area. I think. Everyone's seen the, the incident, I can't remember what state it was in where. An elderly man, they push him down and he falls back and, and injures his head. And so our tactic was, um, we, we deployed, um, uh. We, we deployed a non-inocuous gas. It was, it was, didn't have gas in it. It just was a cloud of smoke. To try to let, and, and this was after we had told people, we need you to leave. Uh, you're in violation of the law and the curfew, and if you don't, we're gonna arrest you and in that arrest, we may use force. Um, and so the, the initial approach was to try to use the innocuous uh gas to get folks to leave. They did not do that. In fact, one of the people came up and started blowing a leaf, a blow, a blow to smoke back at us. Folks sho- started throwing things and started shooting fireworks at, at the officers. And, you know, our officers did what they needed to do to clear the area. Uh, so that was what kind of precipitated it. I don't know whether you have anything to add, uh, Captain Daniels or what your thoughts are.
Uh, no, no sir, I think you summed it up pretty well. Um, but the emphasis, I think, would be that. Uh, we did, when the crowds decided the crowd needed to be moved, we did provide. A significant amount of warning, uh, including what the response of the police department would be. Uh, for those who didn't leave. Uh, and then more critical than that was even that last opportunity with the innocuous smoke. It was deployed at the edge of the crowd, not even into the center of the crowd. Giving one last oper- one last opportunity uh to indicate what our intentions were uh prior to that. So. We did attempt to provide as much reasonable opportunity for people to leave. And then I do, you know. The choice between um using tear gas and using hands-on uh to us. You know, is a matter of one being an irritant and the other is, is more likely to result in injuries. Uh, and so that's why that decision would have been made as well to go with uh gas over a hands-on uh or force at that point.
So, f- forgive me if I'm missing something, but I guess what's still confusing to me is why. The assumption of a use of force was necessary at all. In that I've been. Like I said, I've been at many protests, including here in Athens, alongside some of the same people who got gassed that night and the. It's arrived at the point where the police have given the three warnings or whatever and people don't leave. And there's almost the symbolic. Arresting of people who are standing and sitting around. I've seen that play out a number of times at peaceful protests. And I'm curious why an approach like that wasn't taken, why, why there was the assumption that force was going to be necessary.
I think there was a couple of things that played factored in. First off, we were monitoring social media and other. Intelligence that told us that these people were both aware of the fact that we, that they were in violation of the law. That we wanted them to leave and that we were about to use force and that we were gonna, and they were taking steps to. Uh, prevent against that. And that fact that one point they all locked arms and formed up into a tighter uh, uh, formation. Uh, so we had intelligence that said they were not willing to go peacefully. And so rather than going, again.
But lo- locking arms isn't unpeaceful, right? I, I apologize for cutting you off, but I mean. If I'm standing there locking arms with somebody, that's because I'm worried about getting harmed or pulled away or something. That's not because I'm threatening anyone.
I think we, we can look at the glass half empty or look at the glass half full. Uh, in, in our best uh judgment at that time. We had come to the conclusion that it was time to arrest and or move that crowd. That discussion was pushed up the chain of command. Uh, you know, from the police department and through management, uh, through the management. So. Folks do what we were getting ready to do. They didn't, us may not have known exactly what our tactics were gonna be. But they knew we were about to go in and move that crowd. And we can go back and talk about when and how we're gonna use gas. And I've seen some places that said, we're gonna take gas away from the police department. Well, if you take gas away, now you're left with striking instruments. Um, or physical force that's, as, as the captain said, is much more likely to see, leave some level of trauma. So, um, you know, i- it's easy to look at it the next, you know, uh, three months, five months later and say, well. Should have done this and should have done that. We evaluated all of our options. That night, we did the very best that we can. We learned from it to say. Uh, going forward, we will, we've got, we were gonna do some things to try to avoid uh that happening again. Uh, but you know, I think the other uh salient point is that. Um, the Solicitor General came back behind us and reviewed the. Uh, body worn camera and social media and all the facts in the case independently. And he acknowledged that at the time that we took action, we were in a position where we were lawfully justified. In moving the crowd and using force to, to do that. Uh, so, you know, should we look, could we look to doing it a different way going forward? I'm all ears and we wanna look at our tactics. Every time we do one of these, or any kind of a, a major incident, we come back the next. Day or come back shortly after that and try to critique it to say, how can we do better?
I'd observe, uh, you know, just kind of thinking about the uh in- improving response material kind of relative to. Perception of people on the street, you know, a- at least one of the questions is, you know. How can we simply ensure that there is better engagement? So, you know, neither gas nor, um, you know, nor hands-on nor any other tactics is, is something that we arrive at. So, um, I, I certainly rec- see that as a common goal.
Yeah, and I think, I think, um, um, Captain Daniels mentioned the fact that one of the. Places where we could stand to do better at is, is we were actively engaged with the organizers of the events early on. But as the night wore on and they splintered off into different groups, we lost contact with the leaders and that was a mistake. We should have. You know, continued to maintain that level of contact so we know what their intentions are, who's leading it and. Uh, you know, continue that communication. That was, that was a gap. The other thing is, is although we have one commander. And several officers that approached the crowd and tried to talk with the crowd to explain to them, you know, you need to leave and this is what's going on. We really could have done a better effort at that. And that's why when, um, uh, Commissioner Hugh says. You know, this is what we would have liked to see. I agree. In the future, we need to, you know, be more deliberate about. Going up, stating on body one camera video, this is what we need you to do. And if you don't, this is what's gonna be the consequences. Uh, before we, you know, uh, move in and act. So we, we, I mean. There's a number of things that we wish we would have done differently and we feel like we could do better. Um, but, you know, our actions on that night were lawful and justified.
Move to uh Commissioner Denson and then see Commissioner Link as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, and yeah, I think just to, to, to build on to a little bit onto Commissioner Hul's questions. Um, with, with the May thirty first. With with the May thirty first, uh and I know we've uh Captain Daniels and Chief Sproul have gone through this quite a bit. And so I'm outside of rehashing that, moving to the moving to the the changes that were discussed about about trying to get, you know, a better civil uh disturbance response. And that's all acknowledging that uh communication, especially directly with uh the organizers and the protesters um could have been much improved and possibly uh had the situation occur the way it did. With that, our in in the policies uh that we're reviewing, um especially around um the the CS gas that that was used on that night, are we able to, when dealing with at least protests? And and I'm not, I'm not pushing or advocating for us to simply say, like, all gas cancers have to be taken away, you can never use this again. Because I understand going back to the options uh graphic and such. But when dealing with these peaceful protests, could we at least have it formalized that before um use the force can be used, that direct communication must be attempted between the senior officer on the ground and 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 I might say direct communication, meaning not through a drone, not even through a bullhorn, honestly, we're dealing with these peaceful protests, having somebody cross that line that's kind of been created in those situations and actually is having, you know, a communication uh with some of the individuals, finding out who the leaders are, talking to people. I I bring this up like, I mean, I mean, I have uh, you know, uh done civil disturbance before where I intentionally got arrested, actually. Uh a program that was done with a current US Senator Raphael Warnock, who was also a part of it. And the we linked arms as as Commissioner Huell brings up, that was part of the process and that was part of the goal. And now I think back to it, exactly the way it folded out, we could have just gotten gassed, I guess, which would have been terrible. But instead, we had officers actually approach each of us saying, what is your intent? If you don't move, you're gonna be arrested. And that kind of did each individual and then moved in. So can we formalize that in some way in our policies, this when we're dealing with protests, that we're going to take that communication step?
Yeah, and I think we've already acknowledged that's what we're doing. We're training along those lines. We're building out our own civil disturbance unit, and that's exactly what we would intend to do going forward.
Okay, and and it's gonna be put in place with like our policies, like I know, because I know we do have policies dealing with uh dispersing gas and such and 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 dealing with specifically civil disturbances, but. Um and the one other thing is, and I think this has already been brought up a little bit with the way um some of this can be interpreted when we had obviously the National Guard come out and those kind of things. And uh but also with um with how we dealt with the May thirty first, again, using the the Bearcat, using the drone, um having officers in riot gear, actually being the ones that moved in. You know, I I I I know we've talked about this a little before, but it creates a bit of an us versus them, which I think also kind of contributes to that deterioration of community trust. And it creates those images, but also the experiences from those individuals there. I think really helps go towards, I think, what like Commissioner Myers brought up, which is this like this interpretation or this view of what police are. And it creates this new image that I think really plays into the more harmful image of police rather than the one uh that I think that we all appreciate, which is, you know, just officers out in the community, talking and engaging with kids. Um and I know we're like, we're looking at reviewing those things, but also just even even just how we go about that and and really thinking about that perspective of kind of having a line drawn, the us versus them kind of idea. It becomes very militaristic and it definitely was that night uh with the National Guard there, obviously making it worse. Um but I I and I know we've brought this up a lot, but it's just because it was a a very sad night to me and I think to a lot of people, and I'm sure to many of our officers also. Um as I showed up there at the end of that scene, that gas, like downtown covered in gas um with those tanks and the soldiers there and people running and throwing up in the streets. Um so I I know we're talking about reviewing these policies, but I guess I I really can't speak to enough that we need to get back to the way we usually engage with people doing their First Amendment rights and protesting and having that uh not be that us versus them kind of uh viewpoint.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh Commissioner Link.
Yeah, um I watched a lot of what happened that night live through various Facebook Live feeds. And, you know, I can say that I was disturbed by what I saw. Um and what I saw was from within the group of protesters. I I saw them locking arms and I overheard their conversations. I heard, overheard the epithets that were being hurled at the police. I saw objects being thrown at the police and and I saw them locking arms and backing up around a pair of tents obscuring those tents from the view of the police. And when I watched that live, my stomach turned. I I knew what was coming. Um, you know, and I could imagine what it looked like on the ground from the police, the the viewpoint of the officers on the ground. Um, you know, I I think that and and I also saw what was being posted on social media and and images of glorified violence against police being posted on social media from individuals in that crowd. Um, you know, I think that we need to have a broader conversation and and rebuild that relationship with particular segments of the community that from the get-go are gonna see the pu- the police as the bad guy. I mean, I've seen things today online in in the wake of this recent use of force incident. Um folks, I mean, there's no investigation has even come out yet and people are presuming that officers showed up with the intent to kill someone. So I I really think that that those of us who have connections in that community need to have that conversation as well so we can ha- understand the role of the police in our community and help remove some of these preconceived notions that officers are out there to cause harm to individuals. Um, you know, I know a lot went wrong that night, but I I think that it's a two-sided coin, quite frankly.
And I think, Commissioner, what what you and others have recognized and explained tonight is just that that need for connection and that need for engagement i- i- isn't a one and done kind of phenomenon. It can't begin the evening of any kind of incident. It's it's gotta be um ju- just a consistent presence that, you know, we share as community members, as public servants, as police officers um can engage in our collective safety and welfare. Um so I'm I'm definitely looking forward to the March conversation. I think that's gonna be uh great because, you know, it's evident that this whole group wants to take a huge step forward in terms of how we provide some resources um that we've been doing in a small way, but we need to be doing a larger way. So um Captain Daniel, uh uh Chief Spruul, I really appreciate y'all being here. Um I'll wrap up soon, but one more, Commissioner Huell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I I sorry, I I guess I take a little bit of issue with Commissioner Link's comments just in that. Uh and I really appreciate everything you said, Mayor Gertz, and I I really appreciate where this conversation wound to Chief Spruul and talking about the way forward, and I'm encouraged by that. Um but I don't think we should ever uh treat people yelling nasty things the same as people being violent or threatening violence. And I can't imagine if someone came into the chamber once we're meeting in City Hall again and cussed us out that any of us would feel justified in enacting violence upon them. So I I understand uh that we need to move on from this event and learn from it, and I'm encouraged by how we're going to do that. But I I do take issue with those comments. Um I I had two final questions and I'm happy to save these for a future conversation because I know it's late. Um but one is about an incident that I know preexists to you, Chief Spruul, but I just hear people reference it a lot still. And I was just hoping to get clarity on a policy, and that's around vehicle pursuits. And there is an incident with um officers, Salters, Taylor Salters, and a a resident named Tammy Patman, where the officer pursued the individual with a vehicle and struck him with it. Um and I was hoping that you could just clarify whether vehicle pursuits that are conducted in that manner are in line with the department's protocols or not.
Well, you know, I don't want to get into the specific details of that case. I understand that a lawsuit came out of that. And I would, quite frankly, that happened before I came. I can tell you, though, that since I've been here, we have specifically put policy in that says uh that officers will not utilize their vehicle to intentionally strike another vehicle or a person uh unless deadly force is authorized. So if the guy's standing there with a gun shooting at you in your car, all bets are off. But o- outside of that, uh you're not allowed to use your vehicle to intentionally strike another individual. That's the policy that I have in place right now, and I think it's a good policy.
Thank you. I'm I'm glad that you spoke to that. That was that was my understanding too. I just thought it was important to have that spoken to while we're having this discussion, and I'm sure people at home will watch it. Um my last question is just about um racial disparities and the use of force report. And I I, you know, I guess the numbers there are particularly troubling to me and it's, you know, obviously, I I want to be clear again, this isn't just the police department, right? We're dealing with racial inequality and the whole intersection of complex issues that we face as a community. Uh but I am curious if you could speak to, from your perspective, Chief Spruul or Captain Daniel, what's driving that disparity where we have ninety-two percent of the incidents involving white officers and eighty-one percent of the subjects being black folks?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that this is something that we would have to have some deeper conversation about at another meeting. But uh we live in a community and in a society where a people of color, black and brown people, especially young people, are disproportionately pushed towards criminal activity. Uh and so we are more frequently coming into contact with them because they're being put into those situations. And so the fact that there's disproportionality, the way that you address that is not by saying, at least if you catch a guy that's committed a burglary, don't arrest him if he's black or brown. The way you fix that is you begin to give people in those situations hope. Uh you begin to give them resources and point them towards a positive future. You know, the best uh the best solution to gang membership is getting them a job or getting them opportunities. Uh and so the police can't fix it alone. We acknowledge that we got that there's disproportionality and we need to do our part. But we we can't fix it by ourselves. It's a deeper problem than just us arresting. If my officer comes up and he catches a kid coming out of a house that just committed a burglary, he doesn't have time to stop and say, well, he's, is he black or is he white? Or, you know, should I treat it differently depending on what his race is? He's gonna take action based on what's going on. So where we fix that at is is we start addressing, why do we keep, why do we have a society that keeps putting our black and brown kids in situations where they're engaged and involved in that kind of activity? So I think there's a much deeper conversation there. Great question, much deeper conversation there. But at the end of the day, the police can't fix it on our own. And then the last thing I will say is, there's disproportionality uh in every system uh that we have, housing, uh access to acquisition of health, education, you'll see the black and brown people are behind. So it's not just a police thing, it's a societal thing, and we need to get to the root causes of that and begin to fix that. Is is does the police play a role in it? Absolutely. And we need to, you know, do our part to try to begin to fix it, but it's a much, much bigger problem than something that we can solve on our own.
Well, Chief, thank you for that. Um I I think this whole body agrees that w- we need a wealth of wraparound and supportive resources in in this community, um including all those things you just mentioned. Um uh Chief or Manager Williams, Captain Daniels, any parting thoughts?
I want to thank the chief and the captain for being here tonight. Uh I appreciate all the questions. I think this is a good good conversation. Uh and it's not the end of it. We're gonna continue this uh at the March ninth work session. And I'll be working with the chief and the captain on on that. We've got some things we want to share with you about, and I think it'll be very instructive for the community about this department's approach to community policing and some ideas on uh, you know, expanding the co-responder units to have better coverage. We'll cover all those things. In the meantime, if you've got questions or or uh topics that you want to speak to that we might be able to incorporate in there, please send those to us in advance.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Captain, Chief, Commissioners, um y'all, please be safe out there. Have a great night. Thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody. Good night, everybody.